Good evening, I'm Michael Barnes, the Director of Planning. I will be presiding over the meeting for the election of the Chair this evening. And after that, we'll pass the capital to the Chair, who will conduct the rest of the meeting. I'd also like to recognize our county attorney, our interim county attorney, Andy Herrick, and clerk of the Planning Commission, Carolyn Schaefer. Second thing in our agenda, if there's no objection from any of the members of the commission, is I would like to move the public comment portion to, after the, we scheduled the public meeting, which I believe is item number seven on the agenda. Okay, so to conduct the election of the Chair, I would like to open-
We have to take role first. We have to take role first.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome. Would you like me to take role?
Yes ma'am, would you call us to order first?
Okay, Mr. Bivins.
Here please.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
And Mr. Moore is absent today.
Thank you, Sergeant. So I'd like to open the floor to nominations for the Chair of the Albemarle County Board of Commissioners for 2025. Any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Missile to continue in his fine role as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Will we close the nominations?
There being no further combinations, and the nominations are closed. Is there an elect, is there a motion to elect Commissioner Missile as Chair?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take the role. Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
And Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Well, that campaign's over. No, but seriously, I am grateful to be a part of this commission, especially with the members that are here, as well as staff, and looking forward to closing out AC44 this year. So, thank you, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, sir. All right, I think my first order of business is to ask if there are nominations for the Vice Chair of the Albemarle County Planning Commission.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Karazana for the position of Vice Chair for the 2025 year.
Second. Awesome, are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to elect Commissioner Karazana as Vice Chair?
So move, please.
Second. Can we call the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
And Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, now, I think we are moving on to discussion of the Planning Commission rules of procedure. Mr. Barnes, would you present proposed changes?
This year, we have not made any changes or suggested changes to the rules of procedure, they are the same as they were last year.
Awesome, so do we need to have a motion?
Motion to readop the rules for this year, yes sir.
Do I have a motion to readop the rules of procedure?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Awesome, do we have the role, please?
Who seconded it?
I did, Lonnie, Commissioner Murray.
Thank you. Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks everyone. And now we are moving into discussion of committees, boards, and bodies to which commission members serve as liaison. I think we had a start on this, Commissioner Moore has asked that he continue on the RIO CAC and the CTEC. How should we do this, why don't we start with Commissioner Bivins, are there committees you'd like to serve on?
If possible, I'd request that I remain on the ones which I'm currently assigned to, please.
Awesome, Commissioner Murray?
I'm fine unless someone doesn't want to do the MPO.
All right, Richard Claiborne?
I'm fine to remain as is.
Great, Commissioner Karazana?
I have struggled at times to make the MPO tech meeting because of when it's just given the other, other commitments in my day job.
When does it help?
Yeah, when does it mean?
It's, it's held on Tuesday mornings, it's from 10 to noon. It's one Tuesday a month.
I just ask because I would be willing to do it, except that I teach on Tuesday mornings, it's every fall, so I wouldn't have Tuesdays, yeah.
I'm willing to do that. Are you, okay?
I'm willing to trade on what's some other committee you might be on, Lonnie, if that's, I don't know, there's one that you-
AC44 Working Group? Because your CAC is probably the one you want to stay on, I mean, I don't want to put words in your-
Ask us to stay on the CAC.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to do that, when does that one meet?
It's, it's kind of random.
As, as needed, or, okay.
You can make a random commitment to the random schedule.
It'll be, it'll be a couple times this year, and then we'll be sort of wrapping up.
I'm happy, I've heard there's another one, I'm happy to pick up another committee.
Okay, you good?
I am.
Great, Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes, I'm fine staying with the committees I have.
All right, fantastic, as am I, so I think we're really just making one change, right, Commissioner Karazana goes to AC44 Comp Plan, Commissioner Murray goes to the MPO. Awesome. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, if, if there could be a motion and vote to that effect.
Do I hear a motion to approve the committee membership, as just discussed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? All right, may we have the role, please?
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome, moving on to number six, review and adopt meeting schedule for 2025. We see Planning Commission legal notice. Mr. Barnes, would you prevent, present a brief overview?
Yeah, most of the meetings on your calendar, post calendar, are typical second and fourth Tuesday meetings, a couple of changes, we are targeting March 18th for maybe another work session on AC44, and then the other two changes to make you aware of are in November, Veterans Day is on the 11th, so we're pushing it back to the 18th, and Christmas is 25th, and so we're moving it forward to the 16th.
Got it. All right, any other discussion on this, and if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd move to adopt the, the meeting schedule for 2025-26.
So moved, I'll be second.
Any discussion? All right, may we have the role, please?
Yes, Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and item number seven, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before we move on to the consent agenda, there's actually a second item related to the calendar, and that's the adoption of the resolution that allows meetings to be continued in the event of inclement weather, there's a proposed resolution in your packet that identifies that in the event of inclement weather, the, the meetings or all public hearings will simply be continued on to the next, and so that, the proposed resolution in the packet requires its own motion and vote.
Awesome. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? And the role, please?
Okay, Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and now we can move on to the consent agenda, and are there any commissioners who would like to pull either of the two minutes?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I moved the, the public comment period.
Yeah, I was going to do that next.
Yes, sir.
All right, that'd be fine, okay. Consent agenda, any, any comments, or would someone like to move the, the items on the consent agenda? Move to approve the items?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, may we have the role, please?
All right, Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missel.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone, that was great. Now we will move on to item number two, or move back to item number two, that was changed and moved out of order, and that is public comment on matters pending before the commission, but not listed for a public hearing on this agenda, are there, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to items not on the agenda this evening? If so, feel free to come up, and please state your name and general area of residence. Thanks. Okay, we'll start with John Watkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Watkins, I'm a resident of Albemarle residing in the Cozville area. And I'd like to speak about biosolids in Albemarle County. The land that comprises Albemarle County has been known and recognized for its fertility since before the modern geopolitical boundaries we ascribe to. The Monicans and other original inhabitants of this area lived here because of the relative ease the rich land provided. Our country's founding fathers built the foundation of what became Albemarle County, and later the United States in this area, because it is prime agricultural land. As time has passed, industrialization allowed many of us to move away from the fields to the office, while Albemarle County residents may not all be farmers, we still foster and value the agrarian lifestyle and the indisputable natural beauty and allure of Albemarle County. So, as a native of Albemarle, with red dirt under my nails and in my veins, I implore you to consider testing and monitoring for PFAS on land where biosolids have been previously applied in Albemarle County. The writing is in, is on the wall, in Maine and Michigan, on lands where biosolids were applied, farm businesses have been forced to close, these farmers have lost their livelihoods, and the value of their land and surrounding properties has plummeted. Damming new revelations as to the harmful effects of the biosolid sludge applications are being published throughout the nation at an alarming rate. The free fertilizer came with a cost. Only now are waking up to the BS that is biosolids. Free BS is still just that, BS. To curb further degradation of the land that makes us who we are as residents of Albemarle, I will ask again that you consider incorporating testing and monitoring of lands where biosolids have been applied, and consider banning biosolids altogether when drafting AC44. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Sean Casale, Casallet, sorry.
Cosette.
Cosette.
Clubs. I'm here, I live in Southern Albemarle County, and-
I'm sorry, just state your name, please.
Sean Cosette.
Thank you.
And I live in Southern Albemarle County, and I'm also here to talk about biosolids, and, John, that was amazing, so-
Please make sure you speak forward into the mic, because when you turn-
You bet. Okay. Just wanted to say-
If you turn around, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
What John Watkins says, I concur with 100%. In addition to that, I'm sure many of you, and hopefully all of you are aware of all of the press, biosolids have been getting sewer sludge, which is also industrial waste. One of the points I want to bring up is that why are the rural agricultural area the ones that are struggling with the spreading of industrial waste, I mean, really, I just can't believe the concern that I have, and one of the major concerns that I have is the water, well, I guess they're testing somewhat in public water systems, but our private wells, I believe that Southern Albemarle County has the widest spread of biosolids in Albemarle County, and none of our wells are being tested. It's very difficult and expensive, I've been investigating testing of water wells, so I would love to see a moratorium on biosolids being spread in our county, at least until we have further knowledge of whether or not it's harmful, contaminated, or our wells contaminated, and that's basically what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to speak on matters not on the public hearing? Good evening.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, my name is Kim Swanson, and I will also be speaking on biosolids. I reside in the Rio District and have lived in Albemarle County for over 16 years, in this time I have served on two occasions as the appointed Rio District Board Member to the Albemarle County Service Authority, which is our municipal water distributor, for a combined seven plus years. I wish to bring to your attention the opportunity that is before you in the development of the comprehensive plan by including language and all appropriate chapters to address the land application practice of biosolids, a treated amended form of municipal sludge that has the high potential to be a source of PFAS. As a community, we value water, I was not serving on the Albemarle County Service Authority Board when the decision was made to add granular activated carbon as a secondary treatment to all of Ryvanna's water plants. While its primary role is to reduce disinfection brine products, it is effective, it is an effective barrier for our contaminants, including PFAS. Currently, all of our water quality reports that are produced by the ACSA continue to demonstrate high quality water for distribution, but we are vigilant, given the high profile of PFAS currently has within water systems. We are fortunate to have this level of treatment technology in the municipal system, but a community which plans well and values water resources for all county residents will discourage land practices that can contaminate both groundwater supplies and source, and source water for our treatment plants. I will add that as an example of proactive, considerate, and smart planning, that we as a community also encourage and support through various community partnerships expired drug takeback programs in an effort to keep drugs from entering our water sources and becoming a burden to our downstream neighbors. Please consider adding robust language throughout the comp plan around the use of biosolids so we do not contaminate our water resources, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this? By this meeting matters not before us on the public hearing. Okay, great, seeing none here, are there any online?
No, sir.
All right. With that, we'll move on to public hearings. I just have a matter-
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a comment on the biosolids issue. Not being aware that this was going to be brought forward tonight, I just want to state that unfortunately, our Department of Environmental Equality in the state of Virginia has really hampered local government's ability to do anything about biosolid applications. We're actually not allowed locally to regulate the application of biosolids on agricultural lands. The only thing that we can do is, for example, there are conditions in which you can protect, you can object to spreading of biosolids in inappropriate areas, one of those areas is in floodplains or areas that are used for active recreation, so for example, there was a biosolids application for the James River where there's an active canoe launching facility, and I objected to the spreading of biosolids on that site to the DEQ, and that did not go forward, but that was the only basis I had available to me under which to object, the fact that it was in a floodplain, and the fact that it was an active, a public interaction zone, if you will. So, whether or not we say anything in the comp plan about biosolids, we can decide later, but I just wanted to make it unfortunately clear to the public, Virginia is a Dillon Rule state, and we only have the authority expressly granted by the legislature, we have not been given the authority to regulate biosolids, and in fact, DEQ tied our hands when they originally adopted biosolid regulations more than 20 years ago. So, anyway, Lonnie looks like he wants to add something, but I just, I just wanted to be clear, I wish it wasn't our purview, I would personally ban them, but I don't have that authority, and none of us do here.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and certainly the county attorney can weigh in on this too, but my understanding is from looking at this issue myself and talking to various people and looking at some of the ordinances that exist in other localities, the one of the things that we can do is, is have a monitoring program, and require monitoring as part of that process for people before they apply biosolids, so that is something that I, I think we should investigate, and would be a good, good item to include in, in the compliance plan.
Okay.
Great comments, thank you.
All right, now, go ahead, sorry.
All right, awesome, so just a matter of order, quick question, if we are the applicant, by the, by the we, meaning the county, do I open the public hearing now, or do I wait and open the public hearing after the-
So there'll be a staff presentation, and then the followed by public comment, limited to three minutes per speaker.
Okay, so we're not opening the public hearing yet?
That, that's correct, it'll be a staff presentation first, and, and when it comes to proposed zoning text amendments, there's really not an applicant, per se, so-
Got it, thank you for the clarification, all right, with that, may we have the staff report on ZTA 2023-1 Commercial Solar?
Yes, I'm Bill Fritz with the Community Development Department, with us today also is Lynn Edwards in the audience, the Board of Supervisors funded a consultant to work on this program, and she is with the Berkeley Group and has been helping us, or doing a lot of the work to get us where we are today. The way we're going to do this presentation is I'm going to make the presentation and really talk about the structure of the ordinance and some of the unique Albemarle specific characteristics of how the ordinance is structured and what we've done, and she'll be able to answer questions about state of technology, best practices, what are the localities they're doing, so that may help you, if you have questions, where do you want to direct those questions? So what the ordinance does is it starts with having definitions, and we have several definitions, and the solar energy facilities, they're the panels and all the things associated with production of energy, accessory is small scale installations, primarily to offset onsite consumption of electricity, think your rooftop and small ground mounted facilities. A panel zone is a method of measuring the size of a project, we're using this instead of megawatt or kilowatt, you may have noticed that the ordinance doesn't reference the amount of energy produced, or use the amount of energy produced as a method of regulation. The amount of land used for solar production is more important than the efficiency of the panels and equipment. Regulating based on production does not adequately capture the potential impacts, the range and area needed to produce a given amount of energy, say one megawatt, is simply too large to allow any meaningful regulation. If we are presented with a one megawatt facility, we don't know what the area of disturbance is, the type of equipment, the spacing, the terrain, they all have huge impact on the amount of area used, however, by using panel zone as a regulating features, we can use the land use tools of the code to regulate the impacts. A 10 acre facility producing one megawatt has the same land use impacts as a 10 acre facility producing two megawatts or a half a megawatt. So battery energy storage facilities are typically self-contained structures housing batteries and all the equipment to, to use and charge those batteries, they can be associated with solar installations, or they can be standalone, when they're standalone, they can work to stabilize the grid, provide emergency power like a generator, and can provide uninterrupted power if necessary for production, health, or computer needs. Accessory battery facilities are just like accessory solar, small scale. Think the size of a shed or a garage or other small storage building with minimal impacts. Energy facility is the term we use to cover all those things, it was just a handy tool to not have to keep saying all those words over again, and wildlife corridor is necessary as a definition because we use that term elsewhere in the proposed ordinance, and it wasn't previously any ordinance. So, the main elements dealing with solar are that it's by right over existing impervious areas, houses, parking lots, things like that, it's by right 500 square feet when it's ground mounted, over new, over pervious areas. In the rural areas, it's 21 acres, panel zone, and that's for existing parcels, so any parcel that's in existence today would be able to do one 21 acre area, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. Larger projects would be by special use permit in the rural areas. The battery main elements, it's by right up to 500 square feet, and larger amounts are by special use permit in the RA and industrial areas. Supplemental standards, so just walking you through how the ordinance is structured, supplemental standards apply to all by right projects, they also apply to the special use permit projects, if a special use permit project requires additional regulations due to the unique characteristics of the project, the board may impose conditions to address those impacts. All supplemental standards may be waived or modified by the board if the necessary findings are made, for example, the 500 square foot limit for ground mounted solar may be waived or modified by the Board of Supervisors. The ordinance has regulations for all the things you see on the screen, height, setbacks, screening, fence design, and I'm not going to go over what the standards are for each of those things, but it goes through all the design characteristics of the, of a solar facility and a battery energy storage facility, and based on best practices, we propose regulations for all the potential impacts that were identified. So special use permit, as you know, the county's been moving away from including all submittal requirements in the ordinance, this allows the agent to develop submittal requirements that are for specific projects or types of projects based on the unique characteristics of each project and the area where it's located. There are minimum requirements that have to be met for all special use permit applications, including energy projects, but they would also be supplemental information that we could get on any given project to help address the concerns that may come up from that special use permit. We have decommissioning proposed, we did identify one, I, I became aware of one provision in the decommissioning, it's not entirely clear, I think, in the ordinance that it does apply to projects that, all energy projects that need special use permits, battery storage and solar, that was the intent, it's not perfectly clear in the ordinance, so we will need to amend that. That's my, that's the extent of my, my formal presentation, I would like to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm sure you do, but I didn't want to go through each provision of the ordinance, it's rather lengthy, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Well, let's see, questions from the commissioner, we'll start with Commissioner Firehawk, if you're ready?
I don't really have questions at this point, I have more comments, so I'll just hold them.
Okay, Commissioner Karazana?
Thank you, yeah, so actually, your, your last point on the decommissioning, so yeah, that was a point, that was something that as I was looking through it, it seems like for the special use permit, it's fairly clear that the decommissioning components are there, and how to follow through with that with, with the surety piece. But on the by right, I wasn't quite following how that decommissioning would, requirement would apply.
If there was no special use permit, the- If there was no special use permit, the decommissioning, there would be no requirement for a decommissioning plan due to the scale. And I'll let Linz Edwards talk about why that was, that, that, that was picked as, as the mechanism. We don't do decommissioning, for example, for rooftop solar right now. And we're not proposing that it be done.
Correct, and I think there, but I, there seems to be quite a difference between the rooftop solar and a twenty, twenty-one acre, which could potentially, that, that was, my other question is, um, the twenty-one acre is for the, the panels.
That's the panel zone, correct.
Or it could actually be, as we saw recently, more like a thirty acre.
Right.
Parcel.
So the reason that we picked panel zone is the definition there. Uh, we played around with some other ways of measuring it, for example, say, like saying inside the fenced area. Whoa, what if it isn't fenced? How do you calculate the area? Or the gr, area that's graded? Well, what if they're not grading? So we tried to find a way, we found this definition used by other communities and we borrowed it. Uh, it, it was a way to, to establish the boundaries of the facility and measure its size. And, and we picked the twenty-one, it's, it's in the staff report, but I'll go ahead and say it. We picked the twenty-one, that's the minimum lot size in the rural areas. So it was a number that we, the county's been using for a number of years and we, we borrowed that number.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Clayburn?
No questions on the structure.
Murray?
Yes, I was wondering if you could clarify the other differences between the by right of twenty-one acre um, and, and the special use permit? What, what would apply and would not apply when it's, when we're dealing with twenty-one acres? Would that change, for example, the erosion, the, um, requirements for erosion and sediment control or setbacks? Um, you know.
The only, the only differences would, between the two, the minimum regulations, again, special use permits, you can impose additional regulations, but the only difference in the minimum regulations between a by right facility and one by special use permit would be that decommissioning that we just talked about. And, um, had the other one in my, in my head. And, and getting a special use permit, that's what it was. Those, that's the two things. So, uh, the ordinance state, one of the provisions that's in the ordinance, and I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but it's basically says, uh, notwithstanding any exemption that exists in the water protection ordinance, these facilities are subject to the water protection ordinance. So it would be subject to the same erosion control measures of any other area of disturbance.
So, so would they also require a vegetative screening?
Yeah, the screening, the, the screening is in there, so all the regulations on screening and the height and setbacks, all those things would apply, whether it's by right or by special use permit. All of section five, one sixty-five would apply to a by right, except for the decommissioning for the, um, uh, ones that are, uh, uh, under twenty-one.
And they'd be required to participate in the pollinator smart certification process?
Uh, over two, over two acres, two acres, I believe it's two acres. And that was based on the conversations we had with the, uh, the state, what the right level was to, to establish that, uh, acreage for a project.
I know one of the concerns was that someone could just do a large solar project, um, twenty-one acres at a time. But it, it does look like there's some language in there, um, set to, um, to discourage that. Can you talk about that?
Sure, so the twenty-one acres, it's very much like the development rights that we have. Any parcel that's in existence, right? Any parcel that was in existence when we adopted the ordinance theoretically had five development rights. And if you subdivide the property, you don't magically get more. It was based on parcels in existence on the adopt, date of adoption of the ordinance. Doing the same kind of concept with, with this of saying any parcel in existence as of the date of adoption of this ordinance would have a single twenty-one acre area that they could do. So for, for example, if you had a hundred acre parcel and you divided it into two fifty acre parcels, you could say, well, parcel one gets the full twenty-one and parcel two gets nothing or, you know, however you wanted to divvy it up, ten and eleven, however you wanted to divvy it up. But it's still twenty-one within the original parent parcel. And then to prevent abutting parcels or nearby parcels from having the appearance of a facility that's much larger, there are setbacks that are based on the size of the facility setting back from another facility of a given size. So two large facilities have to be set back a distance from each other. Two medium sized facilities don't have to be set back quite as far and the tables, tables in the, in the ordinance. Does that answer your question?
It, it does.
Thank you.
Could I just ask you, thank, and thank you for a couple of things. Thank you for, for putting page numbers on, on, on the documents. That's, that, that continues to be one of my old guy pet peeves, documents that don't have numbers on them, on page numbers on them. Um, on page three, if you could just help me understand a bit more about how the fencing or what the fencing is on fourteen and how we will make sure that there are wildlife trances through those fences. I didn't, I got, I understand what it says, but I got sort of a little bit.
Sure. So the, the intent, the intent there, and if we didn't get it right, someone let us know and we'll go back and look at it. But the intent there is we were trying to copy the best standards that the state had for fences that are either too high for the deer to get in or short enough for the deer to get in and out and have spacing at the bottom of them to allow the, the smaller critters to come and go without being impeded. So this is, this was, the intent of this was to copy it from the state and use the, the state standards.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And would we ever think about, you know, a couple of months ago, we had, uh, Dominion was here and they out and, and they were talking about putting a, a fence around their, uh, I don't know what that box is called technically, but putting a fence. Would we ever adopt something like that? So say, if you're going to fence out in the rural, if you're going to enclose by fencing out in the rural area, then this is going to be our new standard to be able to let, let, to be able to provide access for wildlife through and above.
Or you mean for, for, for any type of project?
Right, well, not for homes, but for commercial projects. That's basically, that's basically when it's there, no one's looking at it.
I, I, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Then on page five, where you say decommissioning and site rehabilitation, how would one, how would the county become aware that a project has not been in service for six months?
Mm-hmm.
What, what, what would the alarm be within our organization?
And you'll notice that four B says they're required to notify us.
I do know that, but I also know, I, I always start, start these questions from, and no offense if anyone in the audience has, has, has ever sort of done this, so then I don't know what you do. But I'm always, I'm always taken by, by our homestays are supposed to tell us when they're a homestay. And not that we have a homestay on my property, but I am aware of individuals who have said they're not telling the county that they're, that they have a homestay. As I can also imagine, there could be a time, particularly not unnecessarily utility scale, because there's a bunch of buzz, there's a bunch of buzzers that will go off when the utility scale isn't functioning properly. But in the smaller ones, sort of the twenty-one acres and below, that people could just simply say, I'm not doing this anymore. I was thinking of the concern that people shared out in Secretary Road, if that project ever comes back to us. But there was a bunch of concern by the, by the, the people who lived around that, that whether or not this person would really, would, would really be operating their solar, their, their solar project in a way that was beneficial to all or if they got tired of it, just walk away and walk away.
So, uh, this gets, this gets to the structure of the ordinance and why we, why we did it this way. You, you are correct, we would have to do an enforcement and do an investigation, which is what we do for a homestay that hasn't, hasn't, uh, reported either. One of the things the county has done in the past is we did have a provision in the ordinance for wireless, actually, that required the operator to give us an annual report saying, I'm still, I'm still using it. Guess how many of those reports we got? It, and it, it's a, it's an administrative burden to keep track of those and it, 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 it stopped happening and the ordinance was amended to, to not do it because the idea was it's too valuable an investment, they're going to continue to use it. So we use the same sort of thought process for the wireless for this. So that's, that's why and that's your option.
Okay.
Is to, and how to do it.
And, and I'm sort of saying as a way to start, that's, that seems a very reasonable start because it could always be, it could always be altered. If in fact you were finding that people were not being as, as honest as we would, as companies were not being as honest as we would hope.
Any other questions, Commissioner Rivers?
Thank you, sir.
I, I have one more, actually, that just occurred to me. I, I know that we have an ordinance, you know, on the books, you know, about, you know, properties with abandoned, you know, cars and, and, and that sort of thing. Let's say that for one of the smaller twenty-one acre properties where we don't have a decommissioning rule in effect, um, once that's no longer in use, could we not utilize that, that other ordinance that we have in, in existence? Um, to require cleanup of the property if there was dilapidated solar.
I, I'd want to, I'd want to get in touch with, I, I'd want to look into that. And I, 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 I'm not prepared to answer that question right now. I don't know the answer.
Chair, I do have another question.
Yes, sir.
So just to make sure, on, on page six, on page, on paragraph D and paragraph F, agent refers to Mr. Barnes, I assume.
It actually refers to Jody Flardo, the director. The director, the director of the department is the agent, although the agent can designate agents.
Has in the past, okay.
And has.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about the, the organization. Because then I was going to ask things about how do we know, what, given that I know the, the, we spend a lot of, we have a relationship with, with a number of ordinances, that it's at the will of the person or it's the will of the entity to inform us when something's going wrong or there's a complaint. And so when we start talking about taking away roads and taking away sort of the infrastructure that was, that was established on these, how do we know? And I'm very pleased that it is, um, the director of, of the department who has the ability to move in that direction. I feel, thank you. I feel better.
Great, thanks. I had a few questions, um, as well. A lot of them might have been entered. So starting with the twenty-one acre number, I know you mentioned the rationale for that. Did you take time to think about it sort of from the opposite direction? Like what would be appropriate in terms of scale for solar facility as opposed to sort of fitting it into what we already have with twenty-one acre parcels?
It, it, that's, it's a good question. The answer is, it was very difficult. We did, we had a lot of input from a lot of different individuals and some wanted, and you're probably going to hear those comments today, based on the comments we've received, the written comments we've received, it's highly probable you'll get those comments today. Some think that number should be much larger, some think that number should be much lower. And we were trying to figure out what the right balance of that was. And that's really how we approached the, the twenty-one. We were just trying to balance all those comments that we got and looking for something that we could have some sort of justification for, and that's where we got twenty-one.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm looking at the staff report. There's a note in there about the comprehensive plan. Says the proposed ordinance has been evaluated against the existing comp plan. Um, I'm curious, I know we've made some progress with AC forty-four. Have you looked at the future and?
We're, we're, we're in, we, we, we are talking about that and we are using some of the comments that we've received to help formulate what would be in the comprehensive plan, what would be most appropriate in the comprehensive plan. Highly probable the comments made today will find their way to, uh, those working on the, on the comprehensive plan to see whether or not or how they could be incorporated into the proposed comprehensive plan. But yes, we used, because that's what we have to use. We have to use the adopted comprehensive plan.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, I'm not sure if my question's going to be clear on this one. Uh, mentioned solar energy facilities are not permitted in high value forested areas as identified in the comp plan. I guess I just answered my own question. So the identification, sort of the objective piece is that it's in the comp plan.
Yeah, so what the number, the reason that numbers, excuse me, the reason that number's in there is with the recent, uh, wireless, four point one was identified as being an important number by the Board of Supervisors. So we borrowed that number again and it's the, it's what's contained in the comprehensive plan, yes. And, and if the comprehensive plan is updated for any reason, then this would follow along and, and have the new, new forced areas identified.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Um, next question's about equity. And you mentioned regulations are proposed to prevent the concentration of facilities near each other. Multiple projects, and I think Commissioner Murray mentioned this too, multiple projects in proximity may result. So there isn't a scenario where a landowner might own two twenty-one acre parcels that are joined, that could both be by right solar without a significant buffer and that buffer is found in that table, right?
That, that by right, that's correct. However, uh, just to go back and they could go to the Board of Supervisors and say, we would like to have that modified or waived. And the board would go through the review and do whatever the board is going to do to modify or waive that.
Okay. Um, I'm almost done. The bottom of page one on the ordinance itself, where I just didn't quite understand is the maximum height of the lowest edge of all ground mounted photovoltaic panels is ten feet as measured from the finished grade. The maximum height of panels, building structures and other components of solar facility is twenty feet as measured from the highest natural grade below each element. Could you kind of? I don't know.
And I'm going to let Linz, I'm going to let Linz answer this also because this is, this is best practices.
Okay.
Part of that, that elevation, that, that minimizing the height of the bottom of the, of the panel from the ground is to minimize the damage done by runoff. It, the water doesn't have as far, far to fall.
I see.
And cause erosion. So, but we realize you do need to lift those, you do need to have some elevation there. So ten feet is the industry standard for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, page two, it talks about, uh, accessory solar facilities, whether roof or ground mounted are subject to the applicable structure setbacks of the zoning district in which the facility is located, the setback standards do not apply to parcels under common ownership.
So for example, uh, and, and, and let me explain part of the reason that we went with the five hundred also, even though you didn't ask, it, it will help me answer this. We picked five hundred. If, if the ordinance allows you to put panels of, on top of impervious, a building, you could build a garage and you could put the panels on top of it. But what if you just wanted to do panels?
Hmm.
What we found was that the average size of these accessory structures was about five hundred feet. So, okay, if you could build a five hundred square foot structure, why not have five hundred feet? With this, to help the siding in a, in a, in an area where you need to have sunlight, if you own both properties and you don't have to meet the side setback. But if you don't own both properties, you have to meet the side setback just as if it were an accessory structure, uh, a, a garage or a shed. So really treating ground mounted exactly the same as any other structure. That's the intent there with a little bit of flexibility if you own both parcels to, to, um, seat the sun. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I guess I'm just trying to envision a scenario where you might own both parcels and you might sell one of the parcels.
The, the, the buyer would, would know where those, those structures are at, at the time.
Okay, I think I got that. Thank you. That was all of my questions.
Mr. Chair, one minor question.
Yeah.
Um, this, this is just on, um, number ten, on talking about the Virginia, uh, gold certified pollinator smart status maintenance. Um, it says it must be maintained for the life of the facility. My question was just who, who monitors that, that, you know, like that meadow's not dead or whatever.
The state has a monitoring program and we, we had some extensive conversations with the state about how they would go about approving the plans, following up on the plans, monitoring those plans, issuing the certification and, and continuing to monitor those plans. So the state who has the expertise in these, in this program would be the one and they, they, they are eager and happy to do it.
Thanks.
Other ques- questions?
If I could, so Bill, if you would just be kind enough, there's, there's a, we've seen a number of, of, of comments about why would we let this happen in the rural part of the county versus why aren't we doing it at Fashion Square or doing it at Rio twenty-nine or something like that? Could you sort of just share a little bit about what's the difference in that sort of size project versus what we're looking at here as commercial solar? And what's, what's the nexus to the power grid versus something that's like that? I think that might be helpful.
Sure. So one of the things we're doing is incentivizing using those existing impervious areas. It's by right. You can do it. Um, you don't need to get a special use permit. You can just, you can do it. So, um, you know, it, all those places that you described, if they chose to cover their area with panels, they could do that. So that helps to make that a more attractive, whereas getting a special use permits more unattractive. Part of the reason that we have the, uh, that solar is permitted in the rural areas, the comprehensive plan does talk about solar, uh, uh, renewable energy and, and energy conservation and the desire to do that. And the Climate Action Plan encourages that also. If you are going to do that and solar is going to be a piece of that solution, you have to put it some. If you are going to do that and solar is going to be a piece of that solution, you have to put it somewhere. And we didn't think the development areas was the appropriate place to do that. We've invested in water and sewer to to uh facilitate development. Well. These don't consume water and sewer, so we've made investments that we're not going to get any return on. And and we have, as you know. Strains on the on the development area size. So that's why. That's why the rural area is is available.
Chair, could I ask one other question?
Yes, please.
So in in the um. I don't remember what the name of it was, but it was off a secretary road in in the Scottsville district. There was a there was a lot of conversation from people who sat around that particular project that they were going to see the um the the panels. Although that. Having done a site visit there, that would be actually, I thought it was going to be difficult to see the panels. But if you could sort of explain a little bit on what you're decide what you're what you're recommending we do for um for shielding. I think there's a you, this is this is really what I'm. So within the the planting strip, which there's some, if you'd be kind enough to explain that. I didn't understand if the 100 feet included the planting strip or there was a planting strip and then there was 100 feet. So basically you're getting perhaps like 150, you're getting 150 feet, or is it just really within the 100 feet, you're talking about putting a planting strip?
So it it could be, it could, it could be in the setback. The planting strips can be in the in the in the setbacks is and that's customary. That that's how how it's done. And yes, there are standards for um uh plantings and for screening. Um. I don't know if that answers your question, but the the other thing also in terms of visibility. Um, we did uh talk with the airport about uh these facilities. And we're very surprised to learn that airports are actually looking at putting these facilities. On the airport because they're they're not, they they have lots of open area and they don't, they don't present a problem for them. So. Uh, but but they want to make sure that they get a glare analysis, and so that provision is in the in the ordinance.
Thank you.
I want to go back to one one more thing. So you you settled on 21 acres because, you know, we we referenced 21 acres, for example, our subdivision ordinance, but it it strikes me that. If you have 21 acres, the 21 acres refers to the panel size correctly. So um. But once you account for the setbacks, you account for erosion sediment control, um, you know, all the other things that you'll need. Um, you're talking about an area this can be much larger than 21 acres. Did you consider maybe starting with 21 acres as the parcel size? And then adjusting down the panel size to accommodate for a reasonable amount of of setback and erosion sediment control.
So so like I said, we picked, we picked that 21 area and that's that's how we did. We thought we played around with those other. Definitions of what the project area was and couldn't come up with a way to do that. One of the other things that you you could do and and could be done is to say it still is a 21, excuse me, it still is based on panel zone. But to reduce that panel zone size to a smaller amount. To try to get down to an area of 21 acres. On average, that's being disturbed. Now, what that number is, I don't know. It's very difficult. For example, the this this commission asked for some information the other day on the amount of wattage per acre. And we couldn't do that because how do you determine what the area of the project is? Is it the graded area? Is it the fenced areas? At the leased areas at the panel zone? And we have that. We we don't consistently have that information for all the old projects we have, so we were not able to do that calculation. But if if the if the guidance of this commission is to say what we really want is to be it to be. An area of activity or disturbance not greater than X. And you could give us that guidance and we could go and try to work backwards to figure out, okay, that that equates to a panel zone or some other definition of whatever it is and try to. Try to do that definition, but um the the important thing we would need is. What sort of area of disturbance or area of activity, if any, is the commission interested in um? Having included as a by right provision in the ordinance. So if you can provide us guidance with, you know, I think it should be 21 acres of cleared area, you of of, you know, the the zone. Okay, we can work backwards from that.
Okay, and just to follow up on a previous thing, just looking up the the code of Virginia, it says blighted property means any individual, commercial, industrial, residential structure improvement. Endangers the public health, safety, welfare, because the structure improvement of the property is dilapidated, deteriorated. Or violates minimum health and safety standards or any structure or improvement previously designated designated as blighted percent of blah blah blah. I would, I I know you're not familiar with looking at that. I mean. That's that may be, um, I just wonder if that's something we could look at um in terms of the blight ordinance. As he's explicitly referring to that for those properties that don't fall under the um. For the 21 acre.
Here, we we can look at it. I'm just not comfortable answering the question, you know, right now.
Right, and I I think that both the definition of blight and then the zoning ordinance definition of junk could turn on whether a structure is inoperable. So if the panels were still functioning but just not being used, they wouldn't be junk and they probably wouldn't be blight. Uh, if they if they turn into a state of disrepair where they were not functional, then perhaps the zoning administrator would have the ability to pursue a via a zoning violation for junk. Or a a blight remediation measure could be taken to the board of supervisors for consideration. So again, it turns on whether or not the um uh the property on the 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 personal property is functional.
If I could just follow up on on the the clearance. Um, so recently we we approved the um uh. Solar field, uh solar farm that was. 10 acres per megawatt, which uh when looking at some of the averages, the average is about seven, seven and a half. So it seemed like it exceeded that, and a lot of it was the amount of clearing. That it would it required so that you weren't shading the panels with the, I think we talked about that. Um, so it was significantly more. And so I don't, did you ever look at? You mentioned area of disturbance. Is that a a a measure that can be used other than panel size?
Potentially, it it, you know, we'd want to look at that, but some of the newer technologies, they're drilling the they're drilling the foundations in. So the area of disturbance is very small. So we got, you have to figure that out, then that's that.
Yeah, so.
You see, you see, you see where we're going.
Yeah, no, I think I think that's where this conversation is going to get to. It's going to get to the the size at one point, right? The 21 acres and is that the is that the magic number? Can can you just elaborate, I think for both both the public and and for us here? The difference when we say by right. What does that mean to by special use? It doesn't mean you can't. I mean, we've approved a number of facilities, some of them quite large. Um, and and so it's not that you can't do solar. Uh, but the by right itself, when you say you now have this use in in our agricultural lands that. Can you just talk about what what kind of reviews would not be now that would exclude? I mean, one of the things that's excluding is the decommissioning, which I think that's something that we need to talk about, but.
Okay.
But um, can you talk about some other things that would be excluding?
So for example, uh during a special use permit review, you can you have greater flexibility. One of the things you're looking at is whether or not it changes the character of the district. So if it were in a historic district or if it was uh uh in 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 an area of of tourism that we wanted to maintain a a view. That would not, that could be considered during the special use permit, but could not be considered during a by right. That that's just sort of the simplest answer I can give. Does that help?
And and you talked about the the quality of the forest and uh I think you're setting a threshold.
Correct.
Right, that you cannot impact. Often are these forests monitored and and uh maybe there's a question for Commission Firehawk. How often are we updating?
It has not been, it has not been updated in 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 a while. I don't remember what year it was, but it's I I. I I remember that was one of the things that we had, we raised with the board of supervisors was that. That information was somewhat dated and there may be areas within those forest areas that have been timbered and are no longer forested or subdivided and no longer forested. So in that case, an applicant would come in for a by right project, for example, and we would say, nope, you're within the boundaries on the map. And they would say, well, I'd like a special exception. We'd go to the board supervisors and the board would have to take that in consideration.
And and vice versa, you actually could be taking.
There may be some areas that are.
Cause that we actually, so we did have a report and I talked a little bit about that and um. For the end of the year, uh where our forests have actually improved in Virginia and they're sequestering 40% of our. Carbon output currently are not just the forest, but obviously the the soil as well.
It it is an imperfect tool. It's the only one we could identify, but if it's updated, then this ordinance would follow along with whatever update was made.
And just a quick comment, it would it would not be difficult to update the map with data that's available now.
So.
It'd be done.
Thank you.
So so question slash comment on on that specific issue. You know, as part of the committee, when we developed that, there are a lot of metrics that went into that besides just simply the presence of trees.
Right.
And so um, did you consider using the word habitat as opposed to forest? And the reason I say this specifically is there's been a lot of work that's talked about the pre-colonial state of Albemarle County. As a actually a mosaic of of grasslands, savanna and forest. And while we don't have the technology and right now we we identify forests because they're easy. You can see very easily identify forest from space. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're only they're the only important habitat. There are also old growth grasslands, for example. There's some great examples that that I could take some folks to to see those. Those are also equally important. At some point, and I I suspect within five, 10 years, we will also have the ability to identify those from space. Um, they're getting very close. The data is 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 getting better and better. I just wonder why we couldn't write the ordinance in such a way to include habitat as a contiguous habitat block. As opposed to explicitly restricting ourselves to forest. It also seems to create a. A perverse incentive perhaps for someone to clear that some of that forested areas. It's no longer forest. So it would no longer be the forest block anyway.
But it would still be a forced block because that would be the the it it would take an act of the board of supervisors to change the map. So just because it's timbered doesn't mean it drops out. And if someone were to timber it and then say. Go to the board six months later. Board might not be inclined to grant that because of of the action. But uh, the the what you're bringing up about the habitat or the biodiversity areas, the board of supervisors spent. Quite a considerable amount of time talking about just that subject when they were reviewing the the wireless and the the. The the issue was they're not identified enough to be at the parcel level right now. We don't have it. We don't have it identified. At at down to the parcel level. If at such time it were, then yes, we could do that. It's 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 just not mapped specifically enough. That we can base a zoning ordinance on it.
I'm, yeah, so I mean, just not to beat this to death, but like everyone is familiar with big meadows. That's obviously on a protected public land. But that's a good example of a large pre-colonial grassland that we're all familiar with. It is actually very significant. So I I would just say like if you. As opposed to putting us in a situation where we're going to have to rewrite the ordinance when we get better data, maybe we just substitute the word habitat for us right now. Um, along and keep the score system. That way, when we do get the better data, we can just apply it to the habitat block as opposed to the forest block, but.
And in 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 practice, usually Albemarle chose to call those forest blocks. Those have large habitat blocks can also be wetland complex systems. Don't have to be forests. So it's just a funny way that they wrote it in the biodiversity report.
So I don't want to cut off um questions, but are there any specific questions? Because we'll have a chance to go into discussion later as well.
I do have one more. Mr. Fritz has the um, I'm just curious, has the fire department just weighed in with this shift to um 21 acre panel zones being by right? Any concerns there if something caught on fires, a lack of water supply out there, just?
The issue for the the issue for the fire uh department, but yes, we did talk to them. The issue for the fire department was to ensure that the separation of the panels. Is adequate so that they can get into the interior of the property. That's their biggest concern.
Okay, so nothing with the water supply or?
No, and 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 we have reference to the most up to date um building codes or 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 uh code requirements. So no, there was no concern. Beyond that raised.
Great. So um, I don't want to cut you off. There are other, is there anything else you'd like to share in terms of a presentation?
I'm here to answer any questions you have.
All right, so we can open the public hearing. All right, uh, we have, I will open the public hearing. We have 17 people on the sign up list. Um, and I'll just. State a couple of ground rules, which you're probably all familiar with, uh, one called state your name, address and magisterial district. Uh, address comments directly to the planning commission as a whole. If you exceed your allotted time, you'll be asked to end your comments. Uh, remember you'll have three minutes to speak. If the speaker does not use all your allotted time, the unused time may not be shared with another speaker. And I would also say that um in it's oftentimes the case that you agree with other speakers that have come up. And while we would welcome your comments, you don't have to feel the need to come up and repeat what's just been repeated. You will be noted. Um, as as having those comments as well by a show of hands. So um with that, I will start the list. Um, we'll begin with Sophie Massey and on deck. So just so you're ready, you can kind of come up and be ready. It's Carol Carter.
Good evening. My name is Sophie Massey. I live in the Samuel Miller District near Scottsville. I'm going to weave two things together, solar and biosolids. And I'll sprinkle in some factory farming too for good measure. It's all related. It's all industrial practices in the rural area. Today, for the first time, the EPA admitted that forever chemicals in sewage sludge fertilizer, AKA biosolids. Can exceed the EPA's site safety thresholds, quote, by several orders of magnitude. Once contaminated land around here becomes condemned, as it has in other states who are proactive with their testing. What can be done with that land to keep it from recirculating forever chemicals into the food, feed, fiber, lumber system and the environment? And keep farmers earning an income from their land. Solar may provide an answer. As the county staff have noted, solar facilities substantially remove land from agricultural or forestal activity. So let's use that to our collective advantage. Let's be choosy about which land we remove from ag and forestal activity. Let's keep the good land growing food, providing refuge for wildlife and sequestering carbon. And let's put contaminated land to better use in renewable energy production. The county GIS map has a very useful biosolids overlay showing where biosolids have been applied. That's where we should be prioritizing industrial scale solar. Now I'll turn specifically to the ordinance amendment allowing 21 acres of solar without a special use permit. I'll show a personal story about special use permits or rather the lack thereof. I live next to the county's only factory farm. It opened last year. Over 200,000 turkeys come through that property annually. Those animals make a lot of waste. That kind of industrial scale agriculture is allowed by right in Albemarle. No special use permit required. We and our neighbors and the citizens of Scottsville had no notice from the county beforehand. We had no ability to voice our input and ask how a factory farm would impact our well water or Scottsville's drinking water or everyone's air quality. We had no chance to ask how the turkey litter dusk would impact our kids developing lungs. I invite, I invite you all, excuse me. I invite you all to think about special use use permits in the rural area, not as merely extra administrative burden. Or extra bureaucratic hoops, but as common courtesy and a platform for rural voices to be heard. A special use permit is an act of good communication and community outreach. Our suburban and urban friends enjoy that privilege far more often than rural folks do. My family deserve the courtesy of advanced notice and a chance to speak up about the industrial operation going in next door. Likewise, rural folks deserve the courtesy of a heads up for something as staggeringly large as a 21 acre solar development. Rural folks deserve to have their voices heard too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the show of hands. Carol Carter and then on deck is Martha Donnelly.
Hi, I'm Carol Carter. Thank you always for your service. Um, we use rooftop solar on our farm and uh truly enjoy it. Um, I just want to remind, I'm I'm at 852 Redlands Farm in the Scottsville District. Albemarle County's scenic beauty is our most precious asset. It's why we live here, it's the basis for our quality of life. It's why every UVA grad tries to come back, raise their family and bring their parents here to help care for their families. It's why we're second to Napa in the infernal wedding industry, which counts as tourism. I've already written to you and I've talked about the things that I think are critical to county life. Solar health. Water resources, wildlife corridors and the local food um movement. The patchwork quilt of solar installations throughout the county. Is distressing. Um, Albemarle can't be responsible for all the energy. Albemarle can't be responsible for all the energy that AI and data centers demand. Many in the city want clean energy to be available from the county or from somewhere else. Please listen to your county constituents. We have to live with these decisions. I hope you all have a copy of this wonderful book with the sensational photographs by Robert Llewellyn. We have so much to lose if we don't get it right. We can't claw it back if we wreck it. I cringe whenever you say the graded area because it's very difficult to decommission and bring back a graded area to its former self. Twenty-one acres as a borrowed number doesn't make sense. Historic and scenic can't be considered, oh, you said that historic and scenic can't be considered in the by right decisions. And I think, I just want to say again that I think the scenic part isn't especially important to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the show of hands. Martha Donnelly and Kimberly Swanson is on deck.
I'm Martha Donnelly. I live in the city of Charlottesville and I'm a landscape architect. My core energy, my emotional and spiritual energy comes from nature. The trees, birds, butterflies, bees of the rural countryside. Unfortunately, since nineteen seventy-four, we have lost forty-five percent of all invertebrates, insects globally. And it's insects that pollinate ninety percent of our flowering plants. We've also lost about a third of our birds. We're losing our biodiversity. It is critical that we embrace solar energy because it does not harm our environment. Additionally, its energy can be produced while growing the perennials and grasses that support insect proliferation. These insects are the main food for nestlings. In fact, one clutch of eggs, chickadee, of chickadee eggs needs between six and nine thousand caterpillars in order to fledge. And that's in, within about sixteen days. So I ask that the final draft of the solar ordinance be specific and flexible and to encourage solar agro voltaics so that we can encourage our wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Swanson. Catherine Riley. And on deck is Veronica Vitko.
Hello, my name is Catherine Riley. I am a citizen of Albemarle County. I've lived here my entire life. And I live in Forest Lakes. I am a junior at Albemarle High School. And being a part of Gen Z, I have found myself at the center of a climate crisis. Being a teenager, it is hard to feel like I've had a voice, especially in my county. And being here today allows me to bring up my pressing concerns. Climate change is an urgent topic and it cannot, we cannot preserve everything how it is. Preservation cannot just be about aesthetics, though it would be nice to have the aesthetics. Right now with this crisis, it's not possible. Clean energy is the future. And though, we will have to get rid of some of the aesthetics. We also have our green space, our forests, our parks and everywhere we like to reside during our weekends. But we need the change of solar power to combat the almost irreversible destruction of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Vitko and on deck is, I think it's Carolyn Pugh.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Vitko. I'm a resident of Albemarle County and I live in the Hollymead area. I'm also a junior at Albemarle High School. As a student passionate about sustainability, I've seen a growing voice among students asking for an increase of renewable energy in our community. Young people today are constantly thinking about the world they're inheriting. We are constantly reminded of this crisis through news headlines and personal experiences. So many people in this county and people close to us are affected by climate change. We must actively be making, we must actively be moving forward. Change needs to come soon. As youth, we hope that those who have the power now, in this watershed moment, take action and create policy which builds a sustainable community powered by renewable energy. I ask you to please ensure that this solar ordinance does everything in its power to promote renewable energy in Albemarle County. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Pugh and I, my last name is Ophlin.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Pugh. I'm currently a resident of the city of Charlottesville. I grew up my whole life in Albemarle County and I'm a graduate of Albemarle High School. I am currently the climate policy director at C3. And I just want to reiterate that I spent the first twenty-one plus years of my life in Virginia. I went to UVA and I care really deeply about the community here and the environment here. I grew up going to the mountains and all of that is really important to me. And I, I really believe that expanding local clean energy is one of the most crucial things that we can do for both our community and the environment right now. And this has been really highlighted by the recent experience of I, for the last few years have been living out in Los Angeles as I finished my graduate degree in urban planning. I moved back three weeks ago and I just barely missed the fires that are the worst the city has ever seen. And we know that these types of disasters are only going to get worse and worse and more frequent if we don't change the way that we are handling our energy system. Albemarle County also knows this. You all are taking steps to address that and have made commitments in your climate action planning. And so what I hope to see from this ordinance is that it is aligning with those climate commitments and recognizing that we need to make it easier to build clean energy and do our part to meet the Albemarle County and local energy needs. Not the Northern Virginia data center needs, but, but our own. And we are not anywhere close to doing that yet. And so, that being said, I think one of the most important things we can be doing is enabling these smaller community and shared solar scale, which is about three to five megawatts and takes anywhere from thirty to fifty acres. Since there are relatively few utility scale sites that are really viable in the county. And these projects are more financially difficult. If we continue to add lots of different regulations and try to make every project meet every possible ideal, they simply won't happen. And then we are going to continue to see our energy come from these really harmful other places and be putting the burden on other communities instead of our own. So I just asked the commission to think about ways that we can offer flexibility and encourage development in the area of solar and clean energy. And also keep in mind all of the different possible co-benefits that these projects can have, including things like pollinator, but not only focusing on, on pollinator gardens and things. They bring in tax revenues. There can be agro voltaics. And trying to preserve existing mature trees and things like that are all potential ways that these projects can add to the community while offering a little bit of flexibility in how that can be done.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Okay, is it Cyrie? And Paula Beasley is on deck.
Cy, Cy Ophlin.
Thank you.
So I'm a climate justice policy manager with the Community Climate Collaborative C3. So just like Carolyn, my, my peer at C3, I also narrowly escaped living in the middle of an extraordinary, an extraordinarily destructive climate change disaster, because I moved here from Asheville, North Carolina in the summer. Yeah. So the fear that I felt from the outside, as my whole community went totally dark and silent for days on end, was nothing compared to the fear that they felt from inside that disaster. They were trapped. They had no energy. They had no backup. There was no resiliency baked in and this was not predictable. So they say, well, this has happened enough, enough unpredictable disasters have happened that we know that they are happening and they are coming. You may have seen it on your social media repeated. Climate change is experienced as a series of disaster videos viewed through your screen over and over again, until you're the one taking the footage. Climate change mitigation is a both and. I don't want any of us to be the ones taking that footage of a climate disaster in this county. But even more than that, I want us to be able to look back at this moment and know that we did everything as a wealthy county that consumes a lot of energy. We did everything in our power and under our obligation to mitigate climate change by creating our own clean energy in this county. It's been a privilege to work alongside the county during this process of the, the draft solar ordinance over the past year. And to see how the authors of the ordinance have been listening to and responding to the climate advocacy within the community. Since the release last, last March, I ask you all to act boldly and to go further than the twenty-one by right acres. We need community solar. Developers have told us directly that they will be disincentivized. They will not be pursuing two megawatt projects. We need them to be able to pursue three to five megawatt projects across the county in order to meet our obligations and to build resiliency and ownership into our own energy system. It's a both and. We need to address environmental stewardship along with this. Clean energy production is environmental stewardship. So I ask you to act boldly, increase the buy rate acreage up to fifty acres, propel us closer to meeting the clean energy goals of the climate action plan in Albemarle County. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Beasley and Sean Cosette is on deck.
I am Paula Beasley, Esmont resident Samuel Miller. I commend the by right provisions for impervious surfaces, brownfields and former landfills. I'm adamantly opposed to change to permit by right on any twenty-one acre panel in the rural areas. By right doesn't give you the ability to evaluate the five point nine point three other considerations applicable to a special use permit and which will preserve all that is precious and unique in our county. Historical, cultural, prime and locally important agricultural soils, scenic landscapes, topography and land features and residences. Have you really envisioned what would be over twenty-one thousand three to thirty-one thousand five hundred ground mounted panels in every twenty-one acre parcel in our county? How many parcels is that? Within just five miles of my home, there are hundreds. We will have a solar panel checkerboard, splitting our farms contiguous landscape and even for the, not even for the benefit of our residents or tourism. Most solar that is in, in our area, that's industrialized, industrialized size. Most solar projects require greater than two times the amount of their panel size. If you permit it to be by right in twenty-one acres, that's incentivizing people to use all twenty-one acres for panels. The special use process permits residents' voice. And, and we believe that like the non-rural districts, anything over five hundred square foot of panels should be evaluated by special use permit. Otherwise, out-of-state marketing firms will wave marketing brochures promoting two and a half million or more to sign up for the entire county. That would be disastrous. I support PEC's comments, but feel by right of ten acres or less, that is fifteen thousand panels, is still too much. We need the five point nine point three considerations and they should, which would include topography, view sheds and surrounding conservation easements, ag forestal and historic districts, locally important as well as prime agricultural soils. These important funds, hearts and souls put into preserving the lands and is from everyone. Everyone benefits. Charlottesville, town included. Our rural areas capture solar energy utilizing it without environmentally destructive build-out. They capture carbon, stabilize and shelter and provide wildlife habitat, cleanse air and water, create biodiversity and grow food. Appreciate your considering my other written comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. Sean Cosette and Jane Zahork is on deck.
I'm back. I am Sean Cosette. I live in the southern part of Albemarle County in the Samuel Miller District on Langhorne Road. I love solar energy and I'm very concerned about the environment. We have a hundred and fifty solar panels on our property. I live on a small historic rural farm. We generate a hundred percent of our power and then some that we sell back to AEP. So I'm doing my part. And I would like to encourage other individuals to do their part. But I don't understand why we would put the burden of power generation onto the southern, well, not just southern, but in our rural community. Shouldn't the, the burden of generation be put on developments, airports, roofs of data centers, tops of parking lots? I mean, I just can't imagine seeing a twenty-one acre solar farm across the street from me. The noise, I mean, it doesn't seem like much if you live in the city, but when you live in the county, just somebody walking down my road is something that I hear. I mean, it's just the eyesore, the, I mean, I would just love to encourage people to put solar panels on top of their own homes, on top of businesses. Require it for future developments, airports. I love that idea. Please do not encourage this twenty-one acre by right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Zahork and Christine, I think it's Mentamat or Montamat is on deck.
Hi, good evening.
Evening.
My name is Jane Zahork. I live in the Ivy area and I've been a resident of Albemarle County for the past eighteen years. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for solar energy and battery storage facilities. As a young person living in this county and as someone with a passion for clean energy, I care deeply about the steps taken by officials to promote a more sustainable future for the next generation of Albemarle County residents. I, like many others my age, am not a homeowner, which means roof-mounted solar is not yet an option for me. A community solar subscription, however, is an option, one that would be supported by the passage of a strong solar ordinance. A common grievance I hear about renewable energy projects as someone who works in the industry is that they tarnish the natural beauty of the landscapes they're built upon. The proposed ordinance takes a proactive approach to this issue by including specific provisions for setbacks and vegetative screening that are included to preserve the visual aesthetics of the county. I appreciate, I appreciate the holistic approach the county took when drafting this ordinance and believe the guidelines it put forth promotes nothing but responsible development. Adopting a comprehensive solar and storage ordinance is a critical step in the right direction that must be taken if we are to achieve the goals outlined by the county's climate action plan. I look forward to continue seeing the strides taken to promote local energy generation in Albemarle County and to seeing this ordinance move along in the approval process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christine Mentamat, sorry, I'm probably not pronouncing that right. Christine Putnam is on.
I'm Christine Montamet and I live in Charlottesville in the Greenbrier Elementary School area. And I am healthy. But because I was born when the first mainframes were being built, I feel the impacts of carbon emissions with the heat, humidity and sometimes air pollution, even around here. I'm practically a summer shut-in and I resent it. I follow environmental science news and I read that climate systems are destabilizing even faster than scientists predicted. I am frightened, not just for the grandchildren or children, but for me, for us, for every life form on earth. Now, I've put up the maximum rooftop solar that Dominion would allow me to. And it was expensive. I'll be paying for it for a long, long time. and it was expensive. I'll be paying for it for a long, long time. I bought an EV. I charge it at home. I cover my electric needs. We need large scale for everyone because our energy usage is soaring. Data centers, supporting AI, it just gobbling, will gobble up energy. I'm also a gardener. I enjoy birds and nature and not just because nature allows me to live. I am doing what I can with my property. I had a savanna planted last summer. It's 8,000 plants, 35 native species. It's wonderful. It's pollinator smart. I invite you to come visit. Everything we have, everything we all need, rich, middling, poor, city folk, rural folk, everything is endangered. We have to put our everything into generating clean energy and protecting our environment. I applaud your work on this ordinance. I will just put in my plea for clarity of regulation and flexibility of benefits so we can make this work efficient, fair, and fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Putnam and Donna Shaughnessy, I think is on deck, please.
Hello, my name is Christine Putnam and I live in the Scottsville District and I serve on the Albemarle County Natural Heritage Committee. And I also live on property that is surrounded by the Woodridge Solar Project. And so I've spoken to you about this before and so I've been following that and so it makes me keenly aware of what is at stake as we convert forest and farmland into utility scale solar, into what is essentially an industrial use. I appreciate the efforts of staff with the input from the community and our elected officials to craft a model solar ordinance, but it's a big challenge to make sure that we are moving forward in a responsible manner. I'm really pleased to see that the Virginia's, the Pollinator Smart Program is going to be a requirement and also restricting the placement of solar in those high-scoring forest blocks. So those things are really great and I applaud you for that, that those are in there. My biggest concern is the size of the by right facilities. I think 21 acres, that's a lot of land. But if we are willing to allow 21 acres to be developed without a special use permit, there needs to be county required conditions that help to avoid, minimize, and mitigate adverse impacts. And so one thing that I'm especially concerned about is the decommissioning. And I think that there needs to be some provision in there that will make sure that all that material is dealt with responsibly so that we just are not left with this and we don't leave it to future generations, a bunch of this industrial waste. And so that absolutely needs to be dealt with. And also the other concern is grading. And so I'm happy, I think wherever possible, that mass grading has to be avoided. I think, often think if they started the grading process over at Woodridge, if that would have happened last spring where it didn't rain all summer long and then we had a big rain event, what would have happened? So I think we have to be really careful about removing the topsoil and pushing for really strong conditions. And just to close, yes, we need to develop clean energy, but let's be very careful not to harm the precious and valuable resources. Let's not be in a big rush. Let's do it right. So we don't look back and say, ah, we should have done it a little differently. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Donna Shaughnessy and Valerie Long is on deck.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Donna, my name is Donna Shaughnessy. And though I live in the city, I'm the chair of the local Sierra Club and so represent 800 Albemarle members that are in the Sierra Club. We, my colleague Kirk Bowers will be speaking to you remotely. He's our conservation chair and we'll be talking about our overall take on this. But I thought I'd speak to a few details. First of all, I think we are truly grateful for all the changes that were made from the ordinance proposed last year. A lot of thought went into the complex process and it's clear that the staff really listened to our comments. The ordinance is now just inches away from being perfect as far as I can say, I'm concerned. I'd like to focus my comments on the missing middle, sort of like housing. Clearly, large-scale projects need higher levels of scrutiny and requirements to protect county residents and the landscape and, and all those wonderful things. And we all want to make small-scale projects as easy to implement as possible so landowners who want to go solar can do so easily. The proposed ordinance deals with the small and the large projects beautifully. But one thing that's currently missing in the county is projects between 21 and 50 acres that can really further the county's goals toward net zero. I'm sure you've already heard the research that points out that even if every available impervious service in the county were covered in panels, it would still not meet all the county's energy needs. So we need to do more than that for those people who are saying, that's all we need to do. No, we need to do more. So one promising avenue to make us more energy independent is shared solar, small-scale projects that use 30 to 50 acres. Also known as community solar, these projects can be a great option for people who are unable to install solar panels on their roofs because they are renters, can't afford solar, or because their roofs or electrical systems aren't suited to solar. If the ordinance can be changed to by right development up to 50 acres, these small projects could easily be brought into service, leaving the county more resilient during power outages and allowing for more local control. Changing the upper limit would also enable farmers to more easily implement agrivoltative projects. So again, kudos to the staff for their excellent work on this and thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts.
Thank you. Valerie Long and Chris Meyer is on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Valerie Long. I'm a resident of the Whitehall Magisterial District and I'm an attorney at the law firm of Williams Mullen. My colleague Lori Schwalder and I work with solar developers around the state and this region. We've worked with you on, on the Woodridge facility and we have several others we're working on right now. So we appreciate the opportunity to bring comments tonight and appreciate the changes that were made to the draft, the prior draft. We do still have a handful of just technical comments that we'll follow up with staff on, but two more substantive ones that I would ask for your consideration on. One is with regard to the requirement for the Pollinator Smart certification. We support that general requirement, but there is no guarantee that all applicants will be able to meet those regulations. We've discussed this with staff. I think we're maybe at a point of disagreement with them on this point. When we worked with you on the Woodridge Solar Facility, we had a detailed condition of approval that provided a very strict window or process in the event that despite the applicant's best efforts, if they are for some reason not able to comply or obtain that certification, that they have to take other significant steps with regard to the pollination status in order to get as close as possible. And we would ask for you to reconsider that issue. We think if you took the language directly from the Woodridge Solar conditions of approval and inserted it into the ordinance, it would be perfect. It still requires applicants to use their best efforts, but it does provide an appropriate safety valve in, in the event they are unable to do so. And second is the requirement in the current draft that the decommissioning study, or decommissioning plan, that the cost of it be paid in cash and deposited into an escrow account. Most jurisdictions require that instead of the cash being put up, that you can post a performance bond or a letter of credit. That is the process for all other development in Albemarle County. And I am not aware of any reason why the ordinance, draft ordinance requires cash to be posted. That is an extraordinarily financial burden on all projects that would, that would require a decommissioning plan. I think all the other provisions of that plan, they're very stringent, but they're reasonable and they're fairly standard with other jurisdictions. So we would ask, there is a provision that says the county may approve the use of a bond or a letter of credit, but that makes it discretionary. So we would ask for your consideration. And finally, I would note that in the Climate Action Plan, as several other speakers have noted, there are very strong provisions in the plan that speak to enabling and incentivizing utility scale solar and those two elements would further those goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Meyer and Susan Kraus on deck.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. Chris Meyer, I'm the Chair of the, for the Board of the Scottsville Renewable Energy Alliance. We are a set of companies in this town and this area that are delivering clean energy projects throughout the state and the rest of the United States. We want to thank the Planning Department for collaborating with us and the broader community. I've been in a lot of meetings with Bill here and a many other people here behind me on both sides of this, and I think we are in a really good spot with this draft. It's significantly improved over time and I think a lot of our member firms believe this will allow us to do more projects in the county. There are a couple of items that I'd like to see modified that I think will again facilitate the deployment of our projects while still protecting the environment. First, we're requesting the removal of the 500 square limit on ground-mounted solar panel zones for by right accessory in commercial and industrial zone properties. Okay? This is just, if you're going to zone a, have a piece of property that is commercial industrial, let the landowner decide what's the best use of that property. And again, we're talking about solar panels by limited to 500 square feet of panel zones. I would, and again, Ms. Long just spoke about this, we need to modify the surety requirements for the decommissioning. We're happy to have a surety requirement, but we need more flexibility around different types of those mechanisms. I love Donna's missing middle example here. I've heard a lot of complaints about industrial solar projects that will be sending the power to out-of-state data centers, et cetera. If you're really interested in solar projects that will benefit the community, that are community solar, those need to be the 30 to 50 acres. They're two to five megawatt size projects. These are regulated by the state. Those also require low-end subscription, low-income subscriptions. So if you really want and facilitate community solar projects that are going to benefit residents of this county, you need to allow, I would, we would ask for by right up to 50 acres basically, okay? Of panels, zones. Finally, my company that I work for, East Point Energy, we do standalone battery storage. We're very excited to see that energy storage was added to this ordinance also. It is key to a clean energy electricity grid and should be cited also in the county. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for the show of hands. Susan Kraus?
Hi, Susan Cruz, and I am the Executive Director of the Community Climate Collaborative. Excited to be with you all and having this conversation. Back in 2019, the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors actually selected and identified climate action as their number one priority in their strategic planning process. Shortly after that, the county unanimously approved a climate action goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions community-wide by 45% by 2030 and achieve carbon neutrality by 2050. Coincidentally, 2019 was also the year that I became the Executive Director of the Community Climate Collaborative. So it has been a great pleasure of mine to work with county staff, county decision-makers like yourselves, and members of the community on how do we reach our climate goals together? One of the very first meetings I attended back in 2019 was actually a architectural review board meeting of a commercial rooftop solar project in an entrance corridor along Route 29, which required that project to be hidden from view because we wouldn't want 29 to be less beautiful than it already is. So I think this ordinance demonstrates that we have come a long way and the county staff is working really hard to get this right for our community. When the, when the planning commission and subsequently the Board of Supervisors approved the Woodridge Solar Project back in 2023, it was noted by then Chair Donna Price how much energy we consume in Albemarle County. And I encourage you to just stretch your thinking about what we mean by energy we consume, right? We have the electricity we pay for in our homes. We have the future energy we will consume as computers get bigger, as cars become electric, all of those things. We also have the energy we consume in our travel, in our purchases, in our clothing, right? And so we are nowhere close to achieving, generating all of our energy within our own borders. Right now, we are placing, as residents of this community, that burden on many other communities, mostly communities of color and low-income communities elsewhere. So it is really important that we do our part to incentivize clean energy development right here at home. There are two things I want to just note really quickly. One is the tilt, the maximum of 10 feet that is noted in the ordinance. I'm concerned that that might be counter to grazing on site, that there are other considerations we want to look at there. It was mentioned as a best practice, but I'm, I think there are some other examples that where that is not a best practice. So I think we need to look at that one a little more closely. I think we want to make our farms and solar projects compatible. And I just thank you for putting time into this ordinance and looking forward to seeing more clean, clean energy generation right here at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. That exhausts the list, but I also want to open it up to others who are here tonight to speak to this issue. If there is anyone who would like to. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Kurnig. I live in the Scottsville District. We have a five-acre sheep farm in Scottsville. The heirs of our bordering farm have contracted with a solar company to install solar panels. We are concerned that if solar farming is permitted, the entire character of the area will be changed. The economy here in the Scottsville District is based on agriculture, historical value, and the beauty of the area. If solar panels are permitted by right on even 10 acre parcels, the county, rural and suburban, could be checkerboarded with solar panels. Supplementing our energy production can be a good plan, but not at the expense of that for which our county is known and loved. Solar panels are best installed on buildings and above parking lots. We are concerned about what is to be done with solar panels when they are decommissioned. The technology is not yet sufficient. The county is getting ahead of itself in allowing for massive and small solar panel installation on ground. Even if sheep and cattle were to graze under the panels, property values would go down as well as the quality of life. More heat is generated, soils are spoiled by ground installation of solar panels and economies are changed. Beauty is depleted. We all want to be good stewards. We need to look to all unintended consequences. Please consider further restricting and installation of installation of solar panels on agricultural and forested lands. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thanks for the show of hands. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this?
Hi, everyone. I'm Anna Betschenstein. I'm a licensed landscape architect. I practice and have a business in Albemarle County, particularly southern Albemarle. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for putting together this solar ordinance and I'm glad we're here tonight looking at this. However, I would like to comment and say that the 21 acre panels seems frightening. I know other people have said that there's going to be a patchwork development in Albemarle County by right. And I would encourage you all to restrict that number further. I'm also curious and would recommend. I'm also curious and would recommend that we consider the elevations of properties when, when looking and doing things by right. And also view sheds. That's it. Make it quick. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? All right. Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name's Chris Perro. I live in southern Albemarle County also, in Albemarle. And I just wanted to say that 21 acres is about 900,000 square feet. So I don't know if people can really envision what that is, but 900,000 square feet is like eight city blocks. So having planting to block out a by right solar field of 21 acres is really a pipe dream because over eight city blocks or 16 football fields, the earth upon which we live can change dramatically. So there, it's just like a wild idea to think that we would just say, yes, everyone who has 21 acres, just go for it. Just do it. And I think that we really need to reconsider the idea of ground mounted solar in such a large scale without further consideration. One acre is 43,000 square feet approximately, which is also an enormous amount of space and probably enough solar panel exposure to power like 20 homes. So I think that we just need to like not create our own crisis here out of fear of a climate crisis, which is certainly reasonable to understand. But yeah, I think that that is extremely irresponsible of us in thinking towards the future. We're talking about things that we construct as human beings versus like what has been created by something much greater than us that has created all of this. And so I think we need to take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this? If not, is there anyone online?
Do you have one person on the line?
Okay.
Dana Bowers, please unmute yourself. And when you start talking, please state your name and where you're located, and you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Kirk Bowers. I am a 38 year resident of the Ravanna District, a 400 year descendant of Virginia. And I currently serve as the Conservation Chair for the Piedmont Group Sierra Club. My profession, I have been a professional engineer for over 40 years. I can answer a lot of your questions that I heard this evening because I know the field. Civil engineers, the ones who who design the plans for solar facilities, and we are responsible for the construction. But I want, I'm also recently off the front lines from having talked to other counties and having looked recently had some experiences I wish to share with you. And mainly, this is in reference due to climate change. I want to say first, by the end of the century, central Virginia will have a climate that is similar to northern Florida, and that's a fact. It's going to happen unless we start to take the responsibility of mitigating climate change to reduce climate change impacts. We recognize that it is our national policy that we want renewable facilities to provide a balance between conservation and renewable energy needs and avoid undisturbed natural areas. We recognize that natural resources is an important resource for mitigation of climate change. However, there is one thing I will say, I don't think the solar ordinance quite goes far enough in encouraging solar development. And it is imperative that we encourage utility scale projects when a site is suitable for a solar farm. The state of Virginia, electricity demand will triple over the next 15 years. Virginia is now the data center of the world. Growth of rooftop and distributed sources can only provide 50% of electricity demand. That's why we need large renewable facilities to close a gap. In addition, climate change now still exists in parts of rural Virginia. More than 30 localities have effectively banned utility scale projects. This lack of foresight places an extra burden on us and other counties to make up for their deficit. So, you know, I am furious about that. That's one reason that we in Albemarle need to have an effective and workable solar ordinance that encourages solar in appropriate locations. I would think we can support larger facilities, but only when the site is suitable. And that, that's all I will say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
No, sir. Oh, wait. Yes, I do. Maria Duster, please unmute yourself when you once you state your address, your time will start then.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank y'all so much. My name is Maria Duster, and I am a Climate Justice Policy Manager at the Community Climate Collaborative. We're an advocacy org that works in Charlottesville and Albemarle County and have had many conversations with the county around this ordinance. I of course want to support, you know, all of the remarks by my colleagues tonight. But I also just wanted to address a concern that's come up a few times, and I'm going to try not to repeat what others have said already. But there was, there was talk about kind of a checkerboard of projects throughout the county. I think there's a bit of fear around the proliferation of all of these projects across the county. And I think it's important for us to clarify that that is, that is not what we are trying to support, and that's not what will happen. As I'm sure many of y'all are aware, an enormous amount of the county is already under conservation easements and other kind of protected regulations. By increasing the size of the smallest by right facilities throughout the county, we are not saying that enormous amount of projects popping up is inevitable. Actually, by kind of providing that, you know, I'll use that missing middle analogy that was made earlier, by providing those kind of small scale solar facilities that are not accessory, that can actually reduce possibly the amount of facilities across the landscape. We deeply support community or shared solar in the state of Virginia, of course, pending some action by the, by the General Assembly, but you know, less than 1% of the county's land or surface area would be required to meet our proportional obligations under the Virginia Clean Economy Act. And so I just, I want to speak on that, you know, and I want to thank the Commission, of course, for their time and thank the county staff for their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. All right. With that, I will, see, I guess, close the public hearing. And I know that there are probably some questions that have been raised in the comments that we may want to sort of follow up with either our consultant or with staff. So why don't we go ahead and do that? Would anybody like to kick us off? Just general questions, comments? Yeah, we haven't gone into discussion yet, but any comments or questions on the information we heard from the community? Sure. Commissioner Bivens?
So, so there's a couple of things here. I, I just happened to hear a little bit of what happened at the supervisors when they talked about the ACE program last week, and you can help me with this, Mr. Barnes, but I, I think what I heard was only 25, not only, but a lot. 25% of the county rural area is under conservation easement. So that's already going to snag a bunch of land off the thing. And then when there was some conversation about just what is farming in this great county of Albemarle. So when I take you down to the farm, what are you farming? Most of it is hay. So the primary, the primary crop in Albemarle County is hay. And you can say, hey, how do I know that? It's because the tax accessor said that to the supervisors. And I don't believe the supervisors would take a false statement. Now, there was another piece that came after that, but I don't remember what that was because I was just sort of perplexed by the hay piece, but perhaps you remember, Mr. Barnes, but the other one was after hay being the primary agricultural crop in, in Albemarle. And if not, that's fine, but I just, I just want to lay that out there. We are not a county that is invested in what I would call valley type farming, or orange county type farming. We are a place that does a lot of hay as our primary crop. So I want to be very clear when we talk about what we're disturbing, that we're disturbing, and there's, we, we, we did quite well when we had, when, when, when the county needed, not county, when the country needed hay because of droughts, we were able to supply that. So that's a very good thing. We were able to export our hay on that. But I want to be very clear that what we're disturbing when we talk about farming in our county today. The other thing that I, that I, I'd like some comment on from someone is that when we, when we did the Woodridge project, that was in a place that was actually scary. I think a number of us went down there and saw it. And it looked like some places that had actually been destroyed and other places I'd been by chemical warfare. That's how bad that site looked. You weren't, you weren't here there.
It was highly eroded, highly degraded.
And just, and, and the, and the trees which were left were, they just, they'd been really, really poorly, they'd been just destroyed. And so I've not yet, in all of our time doing this, and this is a question, I'm getting to a question, have we ever approved a site where they were actually going to come in and take a forest down?
There have been, there have been places that had been agricultural pine plantations, if you will. Not, and I've always said on this dais, if it was a mature hardwood with a thick soil layer, then I would say no. But yeah, the ones that we have approved have been where there's been a lot of pine rotations. Or, or, or it was cleared fields.
Okay, so I just, I'm trying to get the sense of, you know, we use broadly sort of generic terms, and so in the reality of what we're looking at in our community, it's A, not like we're doing corn or we're, we're, we're taking down orchards. In fact, we just had that wonderful project that was done in the orchards up there and off of Batesville, where I think it was the Charles, the Charles, just did this wonderful layout to try and do that. So I was trying to figure that out because I'm hearing a lot of terms that are just like, what is agriculture? What are we talking about when we do agriculture in this, in the county? And then I think that unless somebody's going to tell me I'm wrong, that it's not mostly hay.
Well, part of the reason we haven't seen other applications is because of the special use process, I would think, that has limited that.
Has limited that. And so I also appreciate the fact that when we're talking about, I also, I will, I will, perhaps I'll say, I'll save that. So it was, I'll, I'll save that. That was the two pieces I wanted some, some, some clarity on. What are we talking about when we talk about agriculture in, in, in the county? And then what are we talking about when we talk about how much land can be converted to solar when 25% of the land in the county is already under some sort of conservation easement? That's a, that's a great, that's a good amount of land for all kinds of reasons. That's a good amount of land. But it does mean that we're not, we're sensitive to, as a community, we're sensitive to preserving land in ways that make sense for the future.
Thank you. Any other questions of clarity from staff or, or consultant?
Yeah, yes, sir. Awesome. So so the issue of the, the cash requirement for, you know, as opposed to what we do for for some of the other.
The bond, the bond issue?
The bond issue. Could you clarify why the difference here and that?
If you look at the top of page seven, page five, the county may approve alternate, alternative methods to secure the availability of funds to pay for the decommissioning of a solar facility such as performance bond, letter of credit, or other security approved by the county. If, we'll, we'll look at the comments to see whether or not that's clear enough, but that was the intent is that all, all alternative ways could be used. It's not cash.
Okay, just.
Yeah. So we'll, 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 we'll look at their comments and make sure that it really says what we think it says, and, and we'll take it from there. That was the intent.
And so for the, and then there's also the issue raised with the Pollinator Smart Program that, is there an alternative? What, what would be the alternative in case they could not receive certification with that?
The alternative would be for the applicant to, or the owner to go to the Board of Supervisors and request a modification of that because they say, um, for example, I don't want to do the Pollinator Smart Program because I'm doing this other thing that is equal or better. And, okay, show what it is that's equal or better. Based on our conversation with Pollinator Smart, and, and Ms. Long is correct, we disagree. We believe based on the information we're getting from that program that it can be done and, and yes, it requires some effort, but it, it can be done. And as we said in a prior, at, at, prior special use permit here, we don't like to put into the ordinance things like you'll use diligent efforts, and, and it then leaves it to a subjective analysis by the agent or the zoning administrator. So we'd like that to be done by the Board of Supervisors, and that's why we have it written that way.
Thanks. Any other questions, clarification?
I just have comments.
Me too. I, I do have one question. I don't think, I'm calling this a question. Hopefully it's the right one. You know, it's interesting. There's like, there's so much goodwill in the room. I think everybody is has the, the, this, you know, we're, we're linked in our motivation, right? There's this, there's this, the, the challenge is this balance, and, and the balance being, you know, the, the beautiful place that we are blessed to live in. And then the impact of carbon on that beautiful place, and yet the impact of solar farms that are go unmitigated on that beautiful place, right? So it's this weird sort of, and, and what I'm hearing in terms of what can be used to regulate this is very, to me, sort of black and white. The grays are, there's no real, it's either, it's either special use permit, and that gives us the altern, the, the opportunities to look at decommissioning, and so look at historic resources and to look at view sheds and to look at all those things in a way that's kind of, you know, allows discernment and subjectivity in some cases, right? Or it's by right, and you don't have the opportunity to pull those things in. And so I guess here's my question. Is there a gray area that I'm not seeing or that we're missing?
Zoning is, is an imperfect tool, but it's the only one we have. We have to have a number to have to have predictability, to treat everyone fairly, to treat like projects in a like manner and, and process things in an efficient way. It's very difficult when we have, well, if staff thinks it's a good project, it's administrative, that they think it's a bad project, it has to go by SP.
Yeah.
It becomes very subjective. So it's, we just wouldn't recommend it as a good planning practice. Unfortunately, it's an imperfect tool, but it's the only one we have.
Can I just throw out though, and not for you to necessarily answer now, but localities have adopted fast track permitting, green lighting permitting for projects that are meeting certain green goals, if you will. So it would be theoretically feasible for the county to say something along the lines of we really want to see solar projects. If you have a solar development project, we can put you in a different bucket. And some counties have assigned a certain planner to review those green projects, and they go faster because they're meeting goals. So they're, so it's not either like by right or SGP, and there's nothing in the middle.
It, it, yes.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying it's like super easy what I just said. I acknowledge that.
That technique is used for, you know, economic development, for example, that if you meet certain goals, we will accelerate the review. You still have to go through.
For lead projects, energy efficient building projects.
You still go through the special use permit process, but instead of it taking 180 days, it takes 100 days or whatever the number is.
I think I'd add one more thing, you know, kudos to staff, and kudos to our Cape Department. We held something back on June 6th. We brought in like 20 different people who represented several different NGOs who sort of, as you sort of put it, all these sort of down from these different balancing, different issues. I think that helped the ordinance itself try and become more black and white about the stuff. I'm hearing you guys talk a lot about this 21 acre. I'm hearing you guys talk a lot about this twenty-one acre. And whether that's enough. I mean, to me, almost that's a subjective number at a certain point. Um, there may be ways if you all are. Okay, little size of that, you know, something of that size being by right. Maybe try and find ways of, of curbing some of these other aspects that you have, but I think Bill's trying to say. The extent that we can keep this, um. Either an administrative approval or it gets above a certain level, something that has to be legislative act. That'd be our recommendation to you.
That's helpful. Yeah, no, thank you. And I, I, you know, as I, I think we all realize the, whatever that number ends up being. Which is somewhat subjective. Doesn't mean that something larger isn't going to be approved. It just means that it's going to have these extra. What I think in many cases are wise moments of discernment. That should be there when we're looking at preserving the. The area that we, we, we all love. So anyway, I just.
I'm still struggling with the decommissioning not being in the, in the by right. Why is that? I mean, why can't the decommissioning and even remediation, soils remediation? Be incorporated in, in a by right. Application. Is there, is there a rationale why that?
It could be. I mean, we, we were taking our guidance from. Others, but it absolutely could be. We could knock it down to ten acres or five acres. Uh, at some point, I, I don't know.
Whatever the number is, I guess, whatever the number, uh, would wind up being. Can't the, the, the decommissioning? Be included in a by right?
I think, I think that's what I was trying to suggest in, in my comment. There, there are certain elements. Decommissioning, you want to say, I don't know, I'm just going to throw numbers out here. Anything under or anything above five acres. Would need a decommissioning plan, but anything above twenty-one acres in the rural area. Need a decommissioning plan and have to go through a special use permit process, you know? We, there, there may be some flexibility, especially if there's specific issues. If you feel okay with that acreage size, but you have elements that you're worried about. We can, we can probably, there's ways to be creative. Chair, chair, let's push on that for a second because. Let's not forget that part of the reason with the decommissioning is that there's a shortage. So that's the leverage. I would not be okay with reducing it for five, to the five or ten acre. For decommission and adding decommission and not have a way to ensure. Because you, you win, you, you win nothing. There's nothing gained by that. So if there's going to be de- decommissioning, there's got to be some way to make it happen.
Oh, absolutely.
Cause I, I want to make sure that that, we're talking about that balance there. There's both the.
Well, it's what's happening. Well, we can get into that.
Okay. The other peo- can, 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 can I just ask a question? So by right, what is the process for a by right? What happens in the magic world of planning? When someone says I'd like to do this, because you still have to have a permit, don't you? You just don't sort of pop up.
They still have, they still have to give us a plan to demonstrate that they're meeting all of the, the, the standards that are in the ordinance. All the supplemental regulations in terms of whatever the size is and the screening and the setbacks and so forth. The way we wrote it was they're not subject to a. And, and we wrote it this way to avoid having to process multiple modifications. Uh, they are not required to submit a site plan, but they are subject to all of the site plan requirements. And we do that because. I'm just going to give the easiest example. One of the, one of the requirements of a site plan is that you have to show the topography for the entire property plus fifty feet beyond the boundaries. Well, you're on a hundred acres and you're over in this corner. We don't need the topo for the entire property plus fifty feet beyond, but in order to waive that, you have to go to the board of supervisors. But if you make it the other way around, then we can say you need to show grading sufficient. So we can review your plan. So beyond the boundaries of your, your project. Of a sufficient area, including offsite or wherever it has to go. That's just one real easy example. So they have to give us a plan. We do that. Th- this is how we process, um, towers also. Same, same process.
And I just, I'm sure you guys are familiar with this, but just want to remind you, it's like. Somebody, if they had to go through the special use permit process, that's its own process. And then after that, they have to do a site plan. So. The by right would avoid. Considerable amount of time that would, you know. Staff review time plus then five months to move to the commission and the, um. Board of supervisors. So add that time and then add a site plan behind that. I think that's. Kind of what we've heard through the process could be a bit burdensome. I think that helped influence why we were thinking the numbers that we were.
So I just, I'd say we're in, we're in discussion now, so free for all, uh, in a sense, but. Um, I do have one follow-up on that and it, it's also kind of leapfrogging off of what Commissioner Firehawk said, right? There are situations where you can overlap. The special use permit and the site plan process. Isn't that right? I know you're taking the risk that you're.
Oh, to process both simultaneously?
Yeah.
To an extent you can do that, it, it can be a little bit procedurally difficult because you're trying to base a, a. You're trying to review a plan that's subject to a discretionary review. You don't know. Is what, what if the board increases a setback or what if the board doesn't approve a portion of it? So it can be. False starts. So we generally encourage applicants to not process the, the full plan, but. We can, we can start the review process of, of, of a site plan.
I'm just thinking in this, I'm sorry.
I was going to say the last part is getting cost.
Yeah, I realize.
Why would the applicant put the cost out for the involvement of a site plan if they're not going to get it?
Yeah, and I realize that's a risk to the applicant and been there, done that. I guess the question is. You know, i- in the, for the example here, you're not saying that you essentially need the site plan, but you need to, you need to. Address all of the site plan related issues. More less risk, right? In a sense, because you're.
Well, you're right. You fundamentally do need to submit a site plan and, and if it's a special use permit. Uh, the agent can say for your project, based on the scale. Uh, there's some sensitive area, so we, we need a detailed grading plan in this portion of the, of the project, not so much over here, but in this area. So that's the nice thing about with a special use permit, not having the standards in the ordinance, it allows us to. Customize the, the minimum requirement for a submittal. Uh, if the applicant wants to go beyond that. It's fine, but we want to make sure we get sufficient information with the special use permit.
Yeah. I mean, for me, that's where kind of this all comes down. It's like it's process and scale. It's those two things. And from a process standpoint. You know, if, if the scale, say it's not twenty-one acres, but say it's ten acres. And the scale or, and the process then can somehow be. And I guess this is at the discretion of the applicant, but if there's a way the county can encourage a more expeditious process. That might be helpful in that sense. So I don't know, I'll just throw that out there, but. For the sake of, of discussion, I don't know, is there a size or a scale that this, this elephant in the room number needs to look like? Um, I, I can easily visualize a twenty-one acre parcel because I live in Southern Alamo and I see twenty-one acre parcels. All over the place down there. Um, Bundour and et cetera that are developed. And that's, it's large. It's a large area of land.
Mr. Chair, it would be larger than twenty-one acres if they had twenty-one acres in panels. You have to add another twenty percent of.
So beyond the panel zone, right?
Yes, because they have to have access roads, they have to have groundwater management, they have to do a bunch of other things.
Hundred percent, yep.
So, so that's one of my concerns. It seems actually out of step with our zoning, um. With our subdivision requirements in the rural area is that. If our default size is twenty-one acres, which I hope we'll revisit. Um, then, um. Then if we're trying to match it with that, then it would be the total size of everything going on that should be twenty-one acres, including the, the buffers and the roads and. So forth, which makes the panel size probably closer to something like, um, ten acres. But, but I think, you know, I think doing that math backwards and looking at the setbacks and everything to come with a reasonable estimate. So that it's more in line with the twenty-one acres of subdivision that, that we have in the rural area. Seems to make more sense as opposed to. Twenty-one acres of panels, which, you know, and then.
That could be thirty-five acres.
That seems out of step with the way that we subdivide land in the rural area.
So if we all agree with that, which I mean, I do.
I do, I do.
Then one way to look at this is the area of disturbance, right? We talked about that being the measure as opposed to the panel zone. That a fair way to look at?
I think it's, I think it's a better way to look at it. I, you know, I have a bunch of little tiny comments on this ordinance that are. That I don't need to bring up right now. They're easily fixable, like edits.
Okay.
The language.
We, we, we.
You know, like.
Yeah, we often are aware or become aware as we do our final, we go, whoa, we could word that a little bit.
Yeah. So a- anyway, I have, I have like seven of those things, but. I'm actually not comfortable. And I, I may be in the minority and that's fine, but I'm not comfortable with taking this size. Project out of the S U P process. Specifically because. It takes away our ability to use our discretion to do evaluations like Mr. Bivens was alluding to earlier, you know? This is a highly disturbed site. It's already lost most of its topsoil. Uh, it can only get better by them fixing the crazy grades that are from an old logging project.
Yeah.
And then amending the soil and actually making pollinator habitat out of what looks like a moonscape.
And respecting buffers and things like that.
And all of that. So, uh, yeah, and they did that in that particular project that we know I'm talking about, um, and other ones as well. So, you know, our, we have a very hilly landscape and it does matter where the project sits. Some, some of our commentators talked about, and what about like high up places that are visible for miles around versus. It's, it's very, it's, it's much easier in our landscape than say on the coastal plain to tuck projects into the land. In such a way that you can have a significant project. Without disturbing everybody's view sheds. Now, in terms of them going scattering all over Admiral County. This, the solar sites themselves have to make sense from energy distribution standpoint.
Yeah.
So there's already a map available from the US Department of Energy that shows all of the sites that are ideal for that. Um, I use that as a risk map. Some people, you know, when I'm looking at conservation.
Yeah.
Um, but it's an opportunity map if you're a solar site and company. So they can't just be everywhere. It's not every parcel. But I, I, I just think that. Um, I understand that people want to get projects done quickly. I understand that they are worried that. There'll be so much nimbyism that nobody will get their solar projects through this county. Um, but I think that this body has done a very good job of being objective and considerate. Of all the different factors as we have reviewed solar sites. And I don't, I don't see a compelling reason to give up that. Role just because it's solar. Um, and I'll just say one other quick comment that I don't want to go on all night, you know? But you could have a, you could have a twenty-one acre panel site, let's say, let's say thirty acres. Um, to add for all the disturbance and whatnot. And that wouldn't be big enough to score a four point one as a forest block because the minimum size for habitat core is a hundred acres. So you could have a mature hardwood forest. That would by right be cleared for a solar farm and this, the hardwood forest with its soil layer that took hundreds of years to build up. Most of the soil in a forest, uh, the carbon in a forest is actually in the soil. Um, when you disturb that to put in a technology that's supposed to be reducing carbon. And you're releasing carbon by getting rid of that forest. It doesn't make sense. But that conversation doesn't happen.
Right.
In this ordinance. That, that conversation's off the table. So, yes, we have. Right. We have a role to be good stewards of our environment. But I think there are other ways to make it easier for solar companies in this county. Without necessarily giving away the store by giving away the special use permit process entirely. Now, whether you want to play around with the margins that go, okay, well, let's make it. You know, a, a, you know, a smaller project or, you know, that is by right or however you want to do it, but. I'm, I'm just not comfortable with, with, with changing. This whole thing to be mostly by right, except for really, really large projects.
Can I, um, sort of as we were going, can we just sort of take a straw poll? Is there a number? That you would support that would be anything below that number would, and let's call it area of disturbance. Would be by special use permit. I'm sorry, by, by right.
I really haven't thought that through carefully enough to give you an educated response. I mean, I'd feel like saying ten acres.
Yeah.
You know, but I think I would just be. Pulling that out of my, whatever.
And, and I think still the issue with that is that you can't take ten acres of hardwood. And take it down.
That would still be preserved.
Yeah, yeah.
The hardwood would still be preserved under the current.
No, you would, you would take, you could take anything.
By right.
That's what by right is.
So, so, n- n- no.
No.
By, by right. You can't by right or by special use permit not permitted in. A forest area identified in the comprehensive plan scoring four point one or higher.
Right. So those have to be at least a hundred acres.
Whatever shown in the.
I built that model, so I do know what it says.
So, 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 yes. So if it's not, if it's not four point one or greater.
Right.
Then.
Can be new to whatever.
There are other habitat cores that are a hundred acres, but they're not, maybe don't have rare species. They don't have water. That's much water in them. They don't have as much topography for different habitat niches. Like Lonnie said, there's a lot of fa- soil diversity. There's a lot that goes into that model to rank it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So. It, it's great that we are going to preserve the highest quality ones, but there are. I mean, there are lower ranked habitat cores that just to be a habitat core have to be pretty important. So.
I, I mean, I could. I could take you to sites where it would be excluded into, that I mean, basically you could put a solar field there because we have important sites that. Fall just outside of those, those areas. So, so I mean, I think.
You can have a landscape of rare plants on a certain mountainside that, you know, isn't, isn't listed in that.
The, I, I, I definitely do hear, I mean, I think what, where I, I definitely am is, you know. We have the, there's the project that was referenced in Batesville, right? I mean, where you have solar projects that are exi- supporting existing farms. I mean, that, that seems to be clear. I mean, that, that should be by right. Um, when we're talking about, um, solar is the only use of the parcel. Coming up with acreage of, of that, that, where, where that should be by right, that's a different, different question for me. And, and that's not really addressed in this. I don't know whether it's because we can't address it, um, lately.
It would be too hard to write into code, I think.
Percentage, like a percentage of the parcel has to be, you know. Could only be a certain percent could be solar, you know, like, but I, I don't know. I mean, for me, I, I would lean towards definitely the, the ten acre. Definitely not more than ten acres of panels.
Panels are disturbance. A panels or.
I'd say, say panels, but I mean, I'd say like limiting, you know, the disturbance should, shouldn't be, you know, the overall disturbance and the setbacks. You know, I would match, you know. No more than the, the twenty-one acres. Um, you know, we shouldn't, you know, it should match at least at a minimum our subdivision size of twenty-one acres. So no more than that. It could be less than that for me, but you know, definitely no more.
So just to clarify, you're saying you would support a panel zone of less than twenty-one acres as long as the area of disturbance is not. Is no greater than twenty-one acres. So you.
Correct. Okay. That's exactly what I'm saying. Um, I think, I think too, some of this seems to be, um. To get to, I think what some of what Karen is trying to say, you know, we talked about the need for a rural area plan. And I think some of the, some of the things that would, would be in that rural area plan, like. Identifying areas that are actually important to the kind of agriculture that we want to see in Admiral County. Would be a, a part of that plan. Right now, we don't have those areas designated. I think ideally we should have a comprehensive. Map, you know, plan map of the areas that are priority agricultural areas and we shouldn't allow. This is even as a by right activity in those areas. And I wonder if there's a way of like placeholder, some of those things, like saying areas zone for agriculture. We don't have areas zone for agriculture right now, but maybe after we have a rural area plan, we would. Um, so, holding space for those that would require us to come back and rewrite the ordinance might be a good. Good thing to do as a placeholder, knowing that we're going to have a rural area plan at some point.
And I just, um, z- zero or re- bring you back to one point that you made earlier. So you, it sounds like you are supporting. Acknowledging the facilities within high scoring forest blocks, which are a hundred acre parcels that you would support. I don't want to put you in a spot here, but that you're supporting disturbed area of up to twenty-one acres. That would include clearing with, under by right. Twenty-one acres of hardwood forests. I don't mean that to be a loaded question, but I just want to clarify.
Well, I, I mean. You know, I don't know how that score, I mean, that, that, the natural heritage committee was not. Um, consulted when that's, that arbitrary number was, was come up.
That, that hundred acres is a, a standard established by the Department of Conservation Recreation as the minimum sized forest area for. Uh, interior forest birds to have enough breeding area and foraging area. So. It is, is not an arbitrary number.
Yeah, but it's. First, there are other things that don't require that much acreage. So I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, and that, that's your point. Like it, this is only going to include those areas in the biodiversity action plan, but there could be other. Rare plant areas or something that, that, that would come up if you were looking at each project.
I, I think that, I, as I said, I think there needs to be language in there that includes. I, I think that, I, as I said, I think there needs to be language in there that includes an, an update to the biodiversity action plan. That includes, um, you know, a more detailed rural area plan. That, that leaves space for the idea that there are some places where this may not be appropriate at all.
Right. And just if I can tag on to that. We don't have the rural area plan, so we haven't had those conversations about where in the county.
Yeah.
And since 95% of our county is designated rural area or whatever that number is, it's. Then it's such a lot of area.
Yeah.
To say, hey, you know, anywhere you can do this.
I mean, you know, one, one reasonable compromise would be to require special use permits for. And tell that for everything until that rural area plan is complete. And then once that, that plan is complete, then open the idea that there will be areas where, um, we won't require a special use permit.
But just.
Please.
Jump, jump on, on that, uh, because I, I'm in the same place with Karen. I, I think taking, taking this off of the special use permit. Just doesn't, it's not only us evaluating and having these conversations and except, I think we've, we've been able to. I think everyone that's come, all of them haven't been approved that, that I can think, I don't think we denied any solar today.
No.
So, so. And it's not just us. It's also the public. So giving them the opportunity.
Yep.
To, to voice it is their community, right? It's all of our community.
Right.
So everybody loses that. And, and that's where I'm struggling with. And it is a. We're, we're, we're moving a use into the agricultural areas that is industrial.
Yeah. It, it requires sunshine, but nothing, it doesn't require rural land technically.
And as far as I know, there's only one, one way that, that we get farmland, right? It's only one source of farmland. There's a lot of sources of energy and we. You know, I'm not going to reiterate that. We had the conversation a few weeks ago and I went into detail. And unfortunately they're all imperfect.
Right.
There, there is no perfect source of energy that's going to provide us with everything. So I've been looking for quite a while for solar in my house. And one of the things is that's for me. As a personal decision, that's, that's impeding me from taking that step is I can't find solar panels. They're not made in China. And so that's where 78% of them are coming from full panels. If you break it down to the components, it's 98%.
Lot of carbon there.
Yeah. And we, you know, we talk about equity, we talk about.
And mining.
And, and well. And the mining and the industry is coming out of forced labor. That's a struggle that I'm having. So again, it's, it's all, there's, there's imperfect. Also, the decommissioning piece is something that's still unknown, untested. And the impacts to the soil and remediation. So what is the leaching of these chemicals of these, of these polysite, um, silicones that they're made with? What is that going to affect our soils? We don't know yet. There's just, there hasn't been enough studies on this. So I think there's just a lot of unknowns for us to just leap into this and open up these gates.
Yeah.
So, so I have a really hard time with just saying, no. You know, no special use permit.
So to clarify, we're, you, there's, you support the ordinance. And I'm just, I don't want to put words in my mouth. We just, we're looking for that number still, right?
Yeah.
In a sense. And what I'm hearing is maybe 10, don't know. Need, and we're not. Right. Are you?
I'm probably closer to two.
Two?
And, and there, there's just, there's just, if I made sure, there's a few things with the, the decommissioning part to the, well. Like there's a, in the ordinance, it talks about stockpiling the topsoil and then returning it later. And just from a soil science 101, you can't scrape off the topsoil, put it in a pile, leave it there for 30 years, leaching.
Yeah.
Under the rain and then just like plop it back and it's like soil. It's just rubble at that point. It's not, it's, it's lost all of its organic matter and characteristics that took 100 years to make it soil. So that's, that's just silly. And that's just something that comes from the solar industry where they say, we'll stockpile the soil, then we'll, we'll have it in the corner for 30 years and then we'll smooth it back. So I don't even think we should bother with that. I think it should be more like the, in the commissioning, uh, re, recommissioning, I don't know, whatever, putting it back part. That you try to return it to the natural contours of the land as closely as possible. And that, you know, hopefully all that pollinator habitat you put on there for 30 years made some soil. So, a, and then adjusting for inflation, if you're posting a performance bond, that it needs to be able to. Meet what that cost will be in 30 years. I don't think, I don't, it doesn't seem clear in here, but maybe that's already understood.
It is. There's a review process every five years.
Yeah. So, but I, that, yeah, there was, and everything should have a decommissioning plan regardless of its size. I don't care if it's one acre.
And regardless of whether it's, it's by right or not.
Right. Irrelevant. Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Cleaver?
I, I have a question for Mr. Fritz. In, in terms of defining what commercial scale solar is. What would be that range of panel coverage and acres, right? I know that's kind of a, it's an odd question because it's probably defined by how much energy it's producing, but. Using the terminology that you're using with panel coverage and acres. We're trying to get to the point where it's not even makes sense anymore. Like what's the?
Where it's too small.
Yeah, where the, yeah, exactly.
I'm going to ask our consultant to come up and try to answer that question for you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Zedwards. I'm with the Berkeley Group. Um, we've been working on this for over a year now and I appreciate everyone's effort and time. So I attempt to answer your question. Generally, utility scale projects lose their economic viability at one megawatt. And they need to be able to connect to the transmission level grid rather than the distribution level grid. Is that helpful? Do you want more information?
Uh, I guess we're, we're really grappling with in this discussion, right? Is that the 21 acre panel zone?
Yeah.
Being by right. And so I guess my question, if it could be numerical to kind of align with acre panel zone, what would that number be based on what you described? Is that? Five, six? Have you had these with your expertise?
So for a, a project that the total acreage is 21 acres, what would the panel coverage be?
I'm sorry, to get to the minimum.
Megawatts.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, needs to be this big at least to give at least.
Exactly.
So generally. It's, it's about seven to 10 acres per megawatt.
Okay.
Depending on the topography and because there are such extreme slopes in Albemarle County, you're looking more toward that 10 acres. Per megawatt.
Very helpful.
So 10 is maybe one megawatt.
Yeah.
That's what we.
Especially with the regulations to avoid any riparian buffers, floodplains or wetlands. You're also going to push that closer to the 10 acres per megawatt.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I can stay here if you have more questions or I'll just stay right there.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
In general on the.
Yeah.
Just in general of discussion.
I mean, numbers.
As I, I'm just, I'll just, I'll say one thing. So as we think about how we're, we're going to be recommending this to the board. Our recommendation could be vague, right? We're not really sure somewhere around, but we're really concerned about special use permits and by right and that. Range and where that lies, we don't really know, board. You decide, right? Or, and I think there's a lot of expertise on this commission. Is there something that we're comfortable with in terms of saying, we, we actually recommend approval of this at this number? And with these conditions such as decommissioning should be part of all of the projects.
I, I will say I have a lot of discomfort with 21. So that, that's certainly not my number. And I have a lot of respect for what Commissioner Firehawk and Commissioner Murray have been sharing with their expertise in terms of land development and, and habitats and ecosystems. If I guess if I had to pick a number, it would not exceed the number that our expert just shared. So that's seven to 10. If I had to. Pick a number, but I would have very big concerns with taking us. Out of the, the review process for that discernment reason, um, that we've all been discussing for the last couple of hours here. So. Um, that's where I'm at. Number's not 21. If I had to pick, it would not exceed seven to 10. Certainly want the decommissioning being part of by right without a doubt. And, um, I'm still grappling with taking us out of the ability to review and provide the guidance that we're here to do. So.
And the seven to 10, I assume the one megawatt, seven to 10 estimate was based on panel zone, not total area disturbance.
Right.
Yeah, that would be seven to 10 acres of panels. There are a lot of factors that you, that get into that average, but that's probably the best range. And yeah, closer to 10 just because of the general characteristic of Albemarle County.
So you might need 15 acres to get 10 acres of panels.
Closer to what Commissioner Murray was.
And you're looking at access red setbacks, buffers, um, any type of substation if they need it or. Additional transmission line, um, all of those things that would increase that seven to 10, closer to 10.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we, we had a lengthy conversation. I forget the name of the, what was the solar one we just approved?
Buck Island.
Buck Island. Yeah. So in the Buck Island, they were at the higher end of that, but that was total disturbance. That was actually. Uh, because they were, they had to clear. Uh, it was, it was forested. Uh, but it was, it was a, um. It was fine. It was a pipe farm for, for decades. And so they had to clear. In order to not have the, the shade on the panels so they remember. So they had to clear. So it was a buffer around the, and they, so they averaged to 10, about 10. 10 acres per megawatt. They had, it was a three megawatt and it was about 30 acres. But that, that was total.
Total disturbance.
That was total within their fence line.
Okay.
Murray, thoughts? Oh, you, you've actually already shared your.
Yeah, yeah, I have. I would say too, I mean, I would, I would hope that because I know there can be a lot of issues with, um. Whether we require decommissioning or not for these, for the by right projects, I, I do hope that we'll, we'll explicitly reference blighted property. As applying to this because I know that that can be an issue. Determining declaring something blighted. Um, so that if we can clarify that upfront in the ordinance to say that if, if these panels are disused and fallen disrepair, that. That that could qualify as blighted, that, that could help expedite any of those situations, I think. That's.
Would that, would that be amending our blight ordinance to add that description? Or we don't need to because it's already covered. Our attorney said.
State law addresses blight. So any blight ordinance is on a property specific basis. So when, when the county adopts blight ordinances, it does so when specific properties are brought to the attention of the board of supervisors.
So a solar site could be brought to that attention and.
Uh, uh, and again, it, 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 uh, um, hinges on whether the property is inoperable.
Operational.
Exactly.
Got it.
So I mean, I think just in, you know, just a line saying that if, you know, if the panels are inoperable, you know, in, in a state disrepair. That, that the, the, you know, just have a code reference, the blighted ordinance.
Be blight ordinance, blah, blah, something. Yeah.
I think that would be a handy thing to put in there just in case there's any question in the future. As I said before, um, you know, we've done a lot, you know. The. We do, we're waiting on, uh, we're waiting on a rural area plan. I, I'm not necessarily comfortable with just saying. Forest blocks. I really hope that we can change that to habitat blocks. I think that that's a very, you know, it's a simple wording change to make, and I think it'd be very impactful. I think we didn't include, you know, prime agricultural soils because the, the maps that we have, once again, a mapping issue. Are not great. They're not structured in a usable way, but you know, I. I agree with Karen. Um, I think you had made some comments before that there, there are ways to structure those maps in a more usable way. So. Yeah, great. Commissioner Bivens? Sorry. Thanks for being patient down there.
No, oh, no chair. I, I'm listening. And so as I listen, I'm, I'm learning and perhaps shifting. So there's a piece of this that is really a functional transmission, the trend of the distribution line. So a lot of this conversation is going to go in everybody's backyard. I think it's nice, but it's not, it's not, it's not ever going to be realized. I looked at my road where I live and I've got like 300 acres of land that's like within a two minute walk of me and none of them are going to do it. And so I want us to sort of stop from being sort of firehose to come down to something that actually might actually get built at some point in time. I think it was very helpful when you took the, um, Bill, when you took the, um, the tower, uh, project. The rewriting of the, of the ordinance to supervisors, you actually laid out areas on the maps that were here historic, here's this. I don't need to get into my whole, um, ugly terminology about historic, but I'll deal with that when we come back to AC 4040 and why, whose history are we being historic about?
History, right.
But I will go into views at a second. And so I think it would be helpful, not only for us, but when you take it to supervisors to say, where could these things be? Because they're known. They're known. And some of what we're wrestling around or about here may be a nice wrestling event. But it really may not actually, the code may not fully answer it, or the code may be being. Uh, wrestled with for reasons that aren't necessary. Because it's never going to apply to this particular area where you can get, connect up to, connect up to, um, either, what is? The two various or the three various electric people here. So I would suggest if we could do that, that would be helpful for you because I think that might give, help to focus the conversation. I am struggling with what my colleagues are saying about, about reducing the acreage. Because I know where we're going with building. We're going to gross. And we're saying to developers, here's the panel, here's, here's your, here's what you can use. You figure out how to do whatever you're going to do. Given these, given these restrictions. You know, so, so we've made that decision. We're going to go to gross. Use that for acreage. Hearing from our colleague, uh, our consultant colleague that said 10, uh, 10 acres per megawatts. I think that's what you shared with us. Um, I think what we will effectively do if we go in that direction of reducing it down to 10 or 15. Is we will effectively close the door to any kind of commercial, any commercial, um, projects that take place here. And.
Well, they're still allowed by special use permit.
I know they are. I know they are. I know they are. So hold on, hold on, hold on. I know they can come through. But remember, even when we put a special use permit, we're putting some X amount of time onto it. And we're also putting X amount of dollars on it. Which is now I'm going to go to Mike, to Karen's piece. I think if there's a way to blend. And say that if you do these things, then in fact you get on a different track, then I support that. I think that's, I think that's smart. I think we're encouraging people to come here because I don't want to be like Orange County. I think Orange County made a strategic mistake by basically saying no more commercial solar, solar projects in Orange County. I think that's, I think that's a place of privilege that I hope we don't go to.
Right.
Okay. I, 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 so I think, so I think that there is a way. For us to answer the sensitivity about the environment. But I think that sensitivity about the environment needs to be sort of, needs to be real. Where, where can I go? Where can I, where can I connect up to? Since we're not talking about bespoke solar systems. That's going to service my house, my EV, if I can ever find, I'll never get myself to buy an EV. That's not going to do those kinds of things. We're talking about things that are going to connect up to the network. There are only certain places that I'm going to just use Dominion because I can't think, I think it's AEP or whatever the other thing, where you live, it's a different, it's a different thing. Where Dominion will say, I'm willing for you to connect up to our system here. And from what we heard from one of our, um, one of our, our, the applicants that came here. There's been a prohibition by this thing that's like Maryland, Pennsylvania and Virginia. It's got three letters that tells you that it, they're saying they're not even taking new, they're not taking new projects on. Or they're being slow in taking, letting, letting new process. So where I'm coming from or what I'm coming to. As I want to be, I want to be clear. That what we're creating an ordinance for is not for the entire 400 acre or 400 miles of, of, of Albemarle County. But it's really for a much smaller area that has the possibility of connecting to the transmission line. And that once we do that, that we figure out a way to, to, if it meets all the various, some, some, some combination of boxes. That staff can look at it, bring it to us for consideration. Perhaps there's an abbreviated consideration that we're even willing to do. But then it goes to the supervisors. But to say, no, I want to push it down to 10 acres. I'm not a, I, I don't sit with the 10 acres. I understand the uncomfortableness. With the 21 acres, but I also think 10 acres is, is, is going to send a signal to the industry that. It's, it's expensive to do business here. And I don't think we'll, we'll achieve some of the things that we're, that we're hoping to achieve.
Well, I was just going to tag on if I can, that, uh, you, one could theoretically also, uh, have. Sir, you, you, if you wanted to make a certain size by right, you also could. so you, you, if you wanted to make a certain size by right, you also could add parameters that they had to meet in order for it to be by right. In other words, you could get into things like view sheds, visibility. There, there are, you could, it's difficult, but you could write something in there, you know, just like when we have zoning clearances for home stays and, you know, we have various parameters that they have to meet.
I mean, I, I'm not sure.
You're pointing somewhere, so I'm looking.
I, I have, I have been doing this a while. I have no idea how to write an ordinance where it would be objective and say the view shed is X. I, I don't know how you do that. I, 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 I don't know. Other than you can't see it from, you know, you can't see it from the road, period. You can't see it from another house, period. I don't, I don't know how to, to do it to say it's, the view is mitigated. And then it's by right.
So we did that with, we did that with, uh, cell towers and then they have to be painted brown and all of this stuff.
But the ordinance says what they have to be.
Right.
It does. It has to be designed to be a certain dimension. It has to be designed to be a certain height. Those are, I can measure that.
Well, the view shed is one component. I think there's so many others you're like, you've been talking about the, the forest condition and.
I mean, you could, you could say like, anyway, there, there are other conditions you could write up that are objective. But I don't think we're going to write them tonight.
So, so it does occur to me too. I mean, to your, to your point, there are only certain areas where utility scale solar is going to be. I mean, what I had originally imagined that this process would be, um, long ago would be, we would identify those areas in the county where utility solar makes the most sense that are not prime agricultural soils, that are not, you know, um, large forest blocks. And we could, we could make those areas by right for solar and maybe it's, it's not just, you know.
You could, yeah, you could. These are the solar zones, blah, blah.
And at that point, I don't care about the fifty acres by right, um, because you've designated, we've, we've done that analysis upfront and we've designated that area as an area that where solar makes sense and we've done that analysis already. And so I think, you know, if we consider this as interim step, um, you know, I think, you know, we should hold place for the idea that maybe we come back. We, we look at those areas that are high party areas that, that maybe we have some more by right potential.
Let me see if I can, um, this is great. I mean, we could probably talk about this for a day.
Oh, no, oh, no. Oh, no, no, no. I'll, I'll give you all of my EV charges, charging credits. You can have all my EV charging credits.
You give me flashbacks to Charlottesville's planning committee.
Let's see if we can put something in, into writing that we can move to the, if that's okay, move to the board. That reflects the conversation. So I'm going to start here. And this is kind of like straw poll. Is there anyone who? Not sure if this is the right way to do it, but I'll try here. Anyone who supports the ordinance as written? Okay, good. That was a good starting portion. All right. So I, I think we, our, our action would be, I don't know if you have a cheat slide, but basically our action is is that we support the zoning text amendment and recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors.
Or, right, or you, you say we, we support, uh, an ordinance with these changes, changes to the proposed ordinance, and that's very common for all.
So the, the changes, I've been trying to keep track. One is, um, the need, so, so acknowledging that the twenty one acre size, we can either be vague, right? We can say, well, we don't really know. We don't think twenty one acres is the right number. Or we could say, we feel that ten acres is a more appropriate number and that is based on a panel zone of ten acres. So we can be more specific. And I just picked that number. Or we can say that it's a total disturbed area of ten acres.
I, I could not go with the total. I, I could not support narrowing it down.
Okay, it might just become commercially unviable and then we've done nothing. We haven't achieved the board. I assume it's the Board of Supervisors goal to have more solar and then we make it commercially unviable. It's kind of, you know, why bother?
I, I would, so I, I think there's also though, that consideration, at least for me, there's the, and, and I know for Commissioner Karzana, because he said it, of the public input opportunity. And so if, if we do, you know, I'm not saying at all, I mean, I'd totally support commercial scale solar in the appropriate, through the appropriate process.
When someone does buy right, do they have to let the neighbors know?
Yep.
Oh, you just, you use, you fill out your application as long as you meet the requirements in the code.
Yeah.
You move on to the next steps.
Special use permit, notify adjacent neighbors.
There's no hearing.
We have, we have a number of things in, in land use that if you do something, you've got to, it doesn't even, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that don't come to us.
If it's a public hearing, there's no public hearing.
No, 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 not the, no, this is not a public hearing. This is about notice to neighbors. This is what I'm hearing here saying this happened, you know, the turkey farm, which I mean, it could be the swine farm for all, for all intent and purpose. That could have come up next to you and you can't do anything about that. And so there are some things that if you change something, you have to let your neighbors know. We don't get to, we don't have to do anything with it, but you have to provide notice to the neighbors.
We had something similar to that for a long time with site plans and subdivisions where we notified the abutting owner and they could actually appeal it to the planning commission. And we went to the planning commission every Tuesday and, and the planning commission had to tell the, the neighbors every Tuesday. We have to approve this even though you're opposed to it.
Yeah.
And it became, it became very frustrating for the, for the neighbors who thought they could do something.
So, um,
because I would need to be writing something here. I want to make sure I understand where you're going with this. Are you saying in, in terms of acreage that if, if there's a thought process that one megawatt is sort of the breaking point between viable and not viable, and you want to allow that? Uh, if you give us that guidance, we can then work backwards for the, the panel zone or clear area. I just wanted to give you, if, if that's what you're, I, I think that's what you were saying, and I just wanted to maybe help you with the conversation.
I mean, based on, based on what we heard from the consultant, I think that's, I, I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but I, I could nod yes to that.
I'm, I'm still not there. I'm not there with making it by right. I'm sorry. I, we have preschools, churches, and many other uses are by SUP.
Yeah.
In the rural area. And yeah, you can say that a bunch of screaming four year olds makes a lot more disturbance than a bunch of humming along solar panels, but they have different kinds of impacts.
You did say ten acres maybe.
I said maybe. I gave you a maybe.
Yeah, I know. So I'm just asking, is, is that a hard no? Now that's a.
I'm, I'm feeling pretty no right now. I'm waiting for Julian to make some compelling argument that enlightens me again and takes me back.
So why don't we come back to that? Because I, I think I might have one for you, but go, go ahead.
No, I'm ready.
So I just wanted, so I, I think Commissioner Murray's uh, proposed or to identify areas that, so we keep the SUP process until we have areas that are identified as, hey, and they can be.
These are appropriate for solar for these reasons. As an overlay zone.
Right. And at that point, they can be by right.
And does that come with a rural area plan?
I don't know if you need it. I mean, you can do it.
Yeah, I don't even know if we need a rural area plan for that, but I, I would feel more, I would much more support that approach.
How, how long does it take staff to do that? Is that, is that a one year exercise or is that something that with the maps, Commissioner Firehawk, that you said are readily available? Is that something could be done in a quarter or I'm trying to see how far are we kicking the ball down the road?
What do you ask us to do? You ask to full, full area plan or you ask us just to do a overlay district?
An overlay district identifies the areas most feasible and suitable for such a project.
So that's going to be, it's going to be difficult to do. So one of the things the state tried to do was identify uh, just to define what good agricultural soil was for purposes of, of keeping solar from consuming that good agricultural soil. And that's been going on for two years now. So just to define, because if you say, oh, prime soils, that's everything. I mean, it's, it's, well, not everything, but it's, it's, it's a lot. So you, we, we'd have to come up with a definition that no one else has of what is good agricultural soil? And, and at what point can you do that?
Yeah, but I, I think we were thinking, I don't know if we were talking about soil.
I think I heard us saying like, no seller cells on prime soil.
Okay. Yeah, I think we were more, more talking about where the transmission, where the possible transmission.
So, so to be clear about that, the, the most recent, uh, special use permit we have, which is the Buck Island Solar, it's about a three megawatt facility. It's not on a transmission. That is a distribution line. So, um, it, it's, it's not and it's, it's not your neighbor, it, it, but it's a, it's a, it's a distribution line that's in that area. Um, so it doesn't have to be the, 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 the high voltage that you're necessarily talking about for some of these smaller things because we've seen them on the smaller things now. Uh, Woodridge, Midway, they were on main lines. The, the Ivy landfill is not, it's, it's, we all know where that is. It's not, there's no transmission line there. So, um, there's distribution line there. So, but you do get to a point where you do need the, the larger, the, the, if, if it requires, if it's large enough to require connection to the transmission line, then obviously they're going to want to be located near the transmission lines.
Is it, is it a possibility that we might be able to say that we support the ordinance um, with one exception, and that is that we have significant concerns with the scale of twenty one acres being by right until such time that more clarity is documented to guide by right developments in the areas of in, uh, I, in areas of sensitivity, including forest soil, historic districts, view shed and others. Can we just make that statement and not actually say?
I haven't been able to take my eyes off my husband's pants since he tried to.
That's looking for full area video. Thanks to you for your there. Yeah, well.
Very scary.
That was.
I thought that was AI. So getting back to, so focus people, so getting back to that comment. Is there a way that, that we can craft our comments that?
What you said is very easy for us to, to give to the Board of Supervisors. I just want to be clear on one thing because we didn't bring it up. Right now, the ordinance allows a half acre by right. We want to play, it, it, it's, it's sort of a mushy definition. It probably should say panel zone. That's really what it's sort of talking about, but we would want to clarify. I'm assuming you don't want to get rid of the existing permission to do a half acre by right in the rural areas.
That's fine.
I would agree with that. Just, just want to be, want to be, want to be clear. That's all.
Yeah.
Fair.
But, but even if we do that by right, again, what is the, what is the decommissioning piece there? So one can say, you know, one can say for the person who has a hundred, a hundred panels on our farm, on our sheet farm, if they decide to go to Europe forever or somewhere else and they sell it, whoever takes it over knows that they've got a hundred panels with some age on them. And I assume, or at least if were any of us, I would discount the price of the, I discount my offer to them, realizing I'm going to have to get rid of these in some X amount of years. And so that's my only, you know, when we talk about equity, we talk about equity, so you, that's not a, that's not an easy thing to sort of say, I'm going to discount the price of my, my offer to you because I'm going to have to rip these things out and then ship them, as Luis was saying, ship them to someplace that hasn't been designated yet. So, so part of what I'm also trying to figure out is on the backend of all of these things, what are we as the county trying to establish as a best practice for the decommissioning of these kinds of, of these kinds of activities? I'm not suggesting that you need to know that now, but I am suggesting that at some point, if we're trying to encourage something, I think the community that then becomes more comfortable with it, if they understand it's a closed system that we do it and then at the end of its useful life, it gets taken away and it goes to, I don't know. There are smarter minds about that than I did, but I am quite sure that being able to say that there's a beginning, a middle and an end. And that we've thought, we've been thoughtful on how we deal with the end, since we're being extremely thoughtful on how we deal with the beginning. But that's something that should also be included in this narrative at some point.
Yeah. So I'd say that's a, yeah, exactly. A hundred percent. So that, and then the second, or maybe we're on third things or fourth, I don't know where we are, but the idea that was raised about potentially finding a way to expedite or overlap process.
You could do it.
That is trying to find that gray area, right? The best of both worlds where you have the pub, opportunity for public input. You can expedite, move things more quickly, um, and you can encourage and should I use the word incentivize? Right, um, developers.
What a prioritize.
I miss money.
Then, then let's find an expedited process that doesn't, that doesn't exclude public hearing. And the opportunity for the public as well as, as the planning commission to evaluate. Um, but at the same time, it's not all sequential, right? That there could be some parallel or not sequential, but, but what am I, do I say, you know, one, one after the other? Right now you have, you have, yeah, you, you have to do the, what is it? The five months and then, then you start with, with the site plant. So perhaps there's some overlap to shorten that time for these projects.
I understand, I understand. I think the comments that you've provided are, I, I think I understand what you're saying and are in a form that we can provide to the Board of Supervisors pretty concisely. And of course, obviously they'll have benefit of the minutes and they can watch this video if they, if they want to, but.
I think so. We're watching right now.
Okay. Do you, do you need a formal motion, I assume?
Yes.
And can we, is anybody ready to make that? Okay. Commissioner Bivens, would you like to give it a shot?
I didn't take your notes.
I'm happy to.
I will say that I, 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 I would move forward a motion based on the notes of the chair. No, that's not good. Uh, I'm looking at my counsel.
The, the chair can certainly make a motion. The chair is not disqualified from making a motion if the chair has the best notes.
Being eager, yes, I'll do it. We have misunderstood. Maybe we can get a second. All right. So, um, I will say that I would move that we support the um, zoning ordinance, uh, ZTA twenty twenty three dash zero one, commercial solar as written with the exception of the concern about the twenty one acres being by right until such time that more clarity is documented to guide by right developments in areas of sensitivity, including forests, soils, historic districts, view sheds, et cetera. And we recommend or we would, we would recommend decommissioning plans for all solar facilities. And we would recommend diligent review of methods to expedite solar projects that are of a larger scale that require special use permits. Uh, seriously, you have to read. No, that we, um, that we would recommend and encourage expedite and the, exploring a way to expedite the process for large scale solar that requires special use permits.
Does that one piece and love to get staff's feedback on, on this is when this goes to the board, is there a way to have some kind of feasibility map that shows, as Commissioner Bivens was saying, it's not all the rural area, but the, the likelihood of these projects coming and highlight certain areas just so we have a sense of scale of impact or?
It, it would be, it would be difficult to do, but we can do certain things, obviously. We, we can, we can back out things that are under conservation easements or, uh, steep slopes areas. We can, we can back those kinds of things out that, or in the, and, um, the, the different forest blocks, we can, we, we, we've done that before. So we can map those kinds of things and, and uh, help the board see sort of the scale and scope of, scope of the problem. Um, but we don't have, we don't have the, we don't have maps, for example, where we could say, oh, the, these are where the pine forests are. These are, you know, we don't have that level of detail right now. We just don't have it.
All right. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
May I second this? Second, please, sir.
Awesome. Motion to the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm chair. I, I, this is kind of like a question for staff is to whether we need to add anything to your question. When I made the comment about, um, the deep, the soils and say, you know, when I said that just putting them in a pile for thirty years and then putting them back doesn't actually make ecological sense. That we would change that to say something more akin to returning it to as close as possible to original contours.
It's, it's, it's in my notes.
Okay, so we don't need to put that in the motion. Okay, that's a minor point.
When we, when we, when we do this, we, we, we will include the comments you have. We'll share that with the planning, uh, Board of Supervisors. Sometimes we share it with them. Sometimes we share it with them and say, and we've amended the ordinance to reflect that comment. So we, we will do those kinds of.
Okay, uh, because I had some de, just definitional tweaks to wildlife quarter for, and that's, but that's like a minor definition.
If anyone has those kind of comments, we would be more than happy to take a look at those. It's that, that, that is a definition that we, we.
Right. And then like forest blocks is referenced in the ordinance, but it's not in the definition. So we should add. Right, and then like forest blocks is referenced in the ordinance, but it's not in the definition, so we should add that as well.
We, we don't believe, we don't believe we need it because it references forest blocks in the comprehensive plan, so it defines it in the sentence.
Okay, so I'll just send you the Wildlife Quarter thing. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all. I had questions, so I don't need to add it.
Didn't my comment about habitat blocks?
Yep, I've changed it too. I've got that one in here too.
Just for one point of clarification on the motion, so when we say supportive of the ordinance, I would add with, with the exception, and I think you said something along this, this line, but with the exception of, of re, of removing the special use permit. So, so no by right, so I think just to make that clear, and then you say until. But I just wanted to put an emphasis on.
Okay, I think what I said.
Just want to make sure that's.
I think I said we were generally.
With the exception of the by right.
That currently exist, the the half acre that currently exist.
We're, we're not, we're not changing that.
Right, that, that's the way, that's the way we're interpreting the way you made the motion.
I, I said the twenty-one acres. I didn't say the by right in general.
With the exception of of moving
Yeah.
Twenty-one acres as by right.
That's right.
So I think just as long as we, we underscore that.
Yeah, got you. Okay. Awesome. All right.
We're just looking at our council to see if he thinks he'll be able to.
It's, it's sufficient if the, if the commission thinks it's sufficient.
Okay.
I'm also, Madam Clerk, happy to review the motion when it gets summarized, if you'd like.
I got it all.
All right, awesome. So we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion. We ready for a vote? Can we have the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Carizana.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and let's take a seven-minute recess, come back at twenty after. Public hearing item, SP twenty twenty-four dash twelve Charlottesville Community Church, and I'll ask for the staff report.
Hold on one second. My IT person's not, they can't see you, but they can hear you.
Pardon me?
Hold on, my IT person has.
Okay.
Get it working.
Here, let's see if that'll work.
Great, good evening.
Not yet.
Not a great evening then.
My, my Zoom screen is black. I can't. There we go. Here we are. We're ready now.
All right, good evening and Happy New Year. Thank you for that lively discussion before this item. Just a quick correction, this, this is a SP twenty twenty-four dash one eight dash one two is another church that came before y'all in December. So I'm Sid Shuff, I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division for Alamo County's Community Development Department, giving staff's presentation for this special use permit. This is a special use permit to allow religious assembly use for up to five hundred seats. The subject property is located south of the city of Charlottesville at twenty-six Pebble Drive. Pebble Drive is accessed by Scottsville Road or Route twenty, and it serves the subject parcel as well as the parcel in the rear, which is TNP ninety dash thirty-five F. The subject property is six point eight one acres and zoned R one residential. The comprehensive plan designates it as office, R and D, flex, and light industrial. The adjacent parcels to the north are part of the Avinity Estates subdivision, which is a planned residential development. The parcel at the rear of the subject property and the parcels to the south are zoned R one residential, and each contain a single-family residence. The adjacent parcel to the west is zoned light industry and contains Martin Roofing. And lastly, to the east across Route twenty, the parcels are zoned rural areas. Currently on the site is an existing single-family residence and a detached garage. As I mentioned in the previous slide, Pebble Drive serves both the subject property and the property to the rear of the site. This is a fifty-foot private right-of-way. The topography of the site is a sloped terrain that slopes downwards towards Scottsville Road. There's a small portion of steep slopes managed in the properties within the entrance corridor overlay district. The applicant will go for, into further detail regarding their proposal, but here's a general overview of their application plan and proposal. As I mentioned in the first slide, this is an SP to allow religious assembly use for up to five hundred seats. There are three different envelopes, building, building slash parking envelope, a building envelope, an open space amenity area. Additionally, there are landscape buffers proposed around the property's boundary lines. The applicant's also proposing for the existing Pebble Drive to be relocated and reconstructed to better accommodate the topography near Scottsville Road. Additionally, there is a ten-foot shared use path proposed along the frontage of the property, and there's also a potential location of a ten-foot shared use path or five-foot primitive trail to the Avinity Estates subdivision, pending Avinity Estates HOA approval. The streets within the Avinity Estates neighborhood are private streets, so it's up to their discretion for how this connection is used. The special use permit was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes, staff believes with the proposed conditions on the next two slides that the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the R one residential zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are six total conditions for this proposal. The first one is to be developed in general accord with the provided concept plan. The major elements as highlighted are the location of the proposed building envelopes, location of proposed parking envelope, location of open space envelope, and the landscape buffers along the property's boundaries. The second condition limits the area of assembly to a maximum of five hundred seats. Conditions three, four, and five are conditions related to transportation improvements on the site. And lastly, condition number six is bolded without a date filled because it gets filled in with the date five years after it gets, if it gets approved by the board of supervisors. In sum, there are two positive aspects. The first is the use is consistent with the review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. And the second is the use is consistent with the southern and western urban neighborhoods master plan. Staff had no concerns. And so staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Great, thank you. Yes, any questions for staff?
Okay, on the, the path that would be constructed by Route twenty. Okay, so I, I assume that it doesn't connect to anything on either side because the other parcels don't have that path, or is that wrong? They do.
That is correct at this point. There is not a, a path on Avinity Estates or the single-family residence to the south. There is a path of two parcels over, which is the Kappa Sigma site, which came before the, the PC earlier last year.
Is there, on, on Route twenty, there are on the other side of the road, Rose, for example, a development that has a shared use path that just ends in, in, in a slope that's never going to be connecting. I, I just want to get your sense that you think that this path in front of this could eventually topographically connect all along. I, I know you're outstanding there with a laser level looking at it right now, just from visiting it.
Yeah, that's the county's hope. We hope to have a, a network out here on Route twenty as identified in our long-range plans. If this gets approved and we get to the site plan phase for this, that's when we'll start looking at the engineering and the grading to make that connection, so it's possible to adjacent parcels.
Okay, and then this is more like a, just a quick, just check in for the public. The, the building envelope, you know, that goes from one side of the parcel to the other, that's just the area in which they would build, but it's not actually the building.
Yes, that is correct. That's the area that staff is okay with them building the proposed buildings. I would certainly hope they would not construct a two-acre parcel. This is the illustrative plan that they provided, and so this is an example of what this development may look like if, if this were to be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, great. Any other questions for staff? Yeah?
So to, to follow up on my colleague's question about the sidewalk, I'm notoriously for, I'm notorious for saying, why have a sidewalk when it's never going to get built? You know, that's, it's never going to get connected to stuff, and so my whole thing is why are we asking? Why do we ask an applicant to build a sidewalk to nowhere on both sides? So that's just, I just have to say that. You know, that's just doesn't make any sense to me, but because the, the Avinity people aren't going to put a sidewalk down there, and Martin and, huh?
Probably not.
Yeah, I mean, they don't want the project there. They've already come out and said, we don't want a project there because it's going to flood our house or something like that. And so the other part, Martin is, they're definitely not going to put a sidewalk. Martin Roofing is definitely not going to put a sidewalk in front on their property, so it's this whole.
Steep, Martin Roofing, it's steep.
And it's steep.
It's a steep entrance.
And it's a steep entrance.
Have to do a, while in our slope ordinance to put it in.
So my piece is, you know, I will just always say, if there's a sidewalk to nowhere, why are we asking them to do that? And I understand you have a response, so I will let you tell me that before I keep going. And you don't have to have a response. You can just say, we'll just let the guy over there.
Just say, thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, you can just say, thank you, sir Will, you know, we appreciate it.
All right, any other questions?
I do have another question.
Yes, sir.
So on page three, at the top, where it says the project narrative proposes a facility not to exceed fifty-five thousand square feet, are we saying when you went to your illustrious plan, where you have the three different buildings there, is that total, total fifty-five thousand feet or, or? Because then in your, on, on the agenda, it says thirteen thousand, thirteen one. So the agenda says thirteen one, but on page three, it says fifty-five thousand at the top.
Sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me where it says thirteen one.
I, I think the gentleman sitting next to you does.
You have the.
Oh, you don't?
Excuse me, what do we have?
On, on, on B, on sec, on the second line on B, on the agenda, it says SP two twenty twenty-two zero zero twelve to allow a thirteen thousand foot building, thirteen square, a thirteen thousand square foot building where the plans, his, the staff report says it's a fifty-five thousand square foot building.
For all the pieces together.
I'm asking, is that for all three of those buildings? Because then that makes sense to me if it's for all three of those buildings.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at the agenda that's provided here. I'm still not seeing that, but those numbers remind me of SP twenty twenty-four dash one two, that came before the planning commission in December. Yeah, so I believe that the thirteen thousand square feet, that was the building for that specific project. I'm still not seeing it on the materials here, but to answer your.
There's like, there's three different agendas. I think you have a different one. It's not on, yeah.
You mean the agenda that was emailed versus what was printed? Maybe it's different.
Oh, I'm okay. So, so I'll just, I'll take it that it's just an editorial, you know, it's an editorial change. And.
Yes.
So I'm being confused. So we really are still at fifty-five thousand across those three buildings?
Yes, and so we didn't condition the building size. That was what was noted in the, in the, the narrative provided by the applicant. The applicant can go ahead and provide further detail for if that's for one specific building or the, the total number of buildings.
The number of things, okay.
Construct.
Thank you, and I will wait for that.
Thank you.
You good, Commissioner Bivens? Any other questions for staff? All right, can we call the applicant? I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Plank Commission. My name is Scott Collins. I'm representing the Charlottesville Community Church for this application. I appreciate you guys hearing this. So the site is six point nine eight acres, so it sounds like I can do uh, uh, solar panels on this thing, right? Just kidding, sorry.
How many?
By right, solar panels. All right.
We would like solar panels on top of your building.
And the parking lot.
And the parking lot.
Sounds good. All right, getting back to this. Um, this is actually a pretty unique project for me. Most of the time I find myself in front of you guys, in front of the Plank Commission for a church, and we're in the rural area, and we're talking about traffic, and we're talking about impacts, we're talking about noise, we're talking about all this stuff. I had the unique privilege being in front of you tonight, talking about a church within the development area, which is really, really where they should be, because that's where their congregation is actually located as well. And the great thing about this property is that the church has bought this property, they bought it about a year ago, and they currently reside about five hundred yards away at the Mountainside View School. So they're super excited to actually get a permanent residence, and they really think that's really going to help their, their church grow and expand the way they want to, and, you know, just still being within the same vicinity area is just, is so huge. It's great. I probably, what I want to do is talk a little bit about maybe like the history of this property, because there's, there's sort of a long history that kind of leads into the challenges of the site. I'll go real quick. I know it's been a long night, but this property was, was originally supposed to be part of the Avinity Development back in two thousand thirteen, when the, when the rezoning for the second phase came through. It was a single-family residence, and they were looking to combine it with the Avinity Estates prop, rezoning. She was getting a little bit elderly and getting really sick, and she saw as, as a way to pay medical bills and, you know, and and give a little bit of money to her, to her, to the rest of the family if, when she later on. But she ended up passing away soon after they had the property under contract and incorporated into the rezoning. And so the son wanted to kind of keep the property, wasn't really ready to kind of let it go, and so we took it out of the rezoning, and it remained a rural property. He lived there for a while. And so fast forward a couple of years, he's kind of moved on, so now they're ready to sell the property, and I've looked at it with a number of different to build, number of different builders on this property. Very challenging site. It's got a lot to hip up. And the biggest, one of the biggest challenges is the access from Route twenty. Everybody knows there's a lot of traffic that goes up and down Route twenty, and anytime you add traffic, especially in the peak AM or peak PM, you have to deal with turn lanes. The right turn lane is pretty simple. That's, most of the traffic is coming that way, coming south anyways from, from the city. But having to put a left turn lane is, is very costly on a fifty-five mile an hour roadway, which kind of leads why nobody's really developed it as a, as a, it's a residential development. Same thing kind of goes with the, you know, it being developed as an industrial site. Again, you're hitting peak PM, peak AM at the same time, and it's really hard to justify that small of an area with those type of improvements along Route twenty. So fast forward, the, when the church found this property, it's almost the perfect scenario for this property that doesn't need those type of improvements along Route twenty because it's not hitting the traffic at peak PM or peak PM times where you need a turn lane in order to justify the uses to get to turn into the site. They are looking at installing a right turn lane coming down, going south to turn into the site, because that does get, you do, you do need a deceleration at fifty-five miles an hour. Let me pull up my plan real quick. I'll show a couple of things here. So as the site plan that, that we talked about, let's see. These are, let me show a couple of pictures. This is what it looks like right now. You can kind of see the terrain on the property. It, it, it goes, it's pretty steep from Route twenty going up to the back of the site. You can barely see the house at the back of that site right there. And then that's Pebble Drive, so that's the other sort of challenge. That road is an existing driveway that services this house and services the rest, the residents, a piece of property behind this property. It is an existing private road. It's, the right-of-way is actually owned by this property. But it's pretty steep, as you can see. And it has no, going back to this old picture, you have really no landing right here at where your intersection would go with Route twenty, especially when you're putting in a, a low-volume commercial entrance and with a turn lane. So there needs to be a landing, landing that meets VDOT requirements at this intersection, and then you need to tie in to this grade, which is fairly steep and not so inviting, especially for church. So we've looked at making, going back to this slide, we looked at doing some modifications, and it might be a little bit more than this, but this roadway is going to kind of come in and veer into the site, which allows us that length, lengthening that roadway as it comes in through here, this area, gives us the chance to come in with a, to create that landing at Route twenty and to let the, let the road come up to grade and then tie back in to existing Pebble Drive where it starts to flatten out a little bit, so it's not so uninviting as you're coming in. That's what we're working hard to do. And as you can see in this, this scenario, basically the edge of our new road is basically on the edge of Pebble Drive, so we're trying to incorporate that road and build it from that little landscape strip out to our site. So we're trying to incorporate that road and build it from that little, uh, landscape strip out to our site. That's what we've been working on right there. Um, this is another picture, this is where it starts to get up toward the top of the site. You can see it gets flatter there, and you can see what we're talking about, you know, kind of coming in here, establishing this edge, and then building the road out this way. Lot of, some things we'll be talking about, what we'll probably hear about is sort of the buffer between this project and Avenity Estates. Just wanted to kind of, uh, pull this up. This was the original approved plan for between, for the Avenity Estates, um, development plan. It was a PRD. You can see that the way that, that buffer was set up, they set up a proposed, eight-foot wooden, um, fence, five feet into the property. And so then landscaping was supposed to go between that fence and the property line. And it's pretty, it's pretty, um, pretty significant landscaping screening with evergreen, a mixture of evergreens and deciduous trees. You have the deciduous trees about every twenty-five feet, and then you have the evergreens sort of staggered in between them. So that was the, um, that was the buffer plan that was supposed to go in along this, this line for the Avenity Estates. And that was, you know, five, six years ago. This gives you an example of what you actually have out there. So had that been installed, this would be, this property would have been a lot more screened from the Avenity Estates development and vice versa. Uh, they've been dealing with, looking at the Avenity Estates that was just developed, this part of the section was developed five, six, seven years ago. They've had, they didn't get exactly what they were promised way back when, and that actually should be sort of rectified. You know, that, that needs to be updated and fixed, but I just wanted to kind of point that out a little bit. As far as the pedestrian pathway along, going back to the pedestrian pathway along twenty. Um, so I've developed about three or four projects along Route twenty. I did, um, uh, Spring Hill, a little bit further south of this property. I did Avenity Estates, um, and I did Galaxy, Galaxy Farm. They all have pedestrian pathways in front of theirs. Um, I guess the, ultimately the idea is that they would all sort of link up, might give you that pedestrian connection between, um, Mill Creek and where Avon Street extended ties back into Route twenty, and give you that pedestrian pathway network. I do agree that, you know, it's not, you know, it, if it's not needed, not connecting to anything, why build it? I mean, maybe the condition can be imposed by saying that the church would build it if it, if when asked, they'll, they'll do it across the front, it's where, where it ties into other people. Because ultimately, these other, the idea is these old properties will be ultimately be developed, redeveloped, and you get the pathway, and then maybe the county comes in and fills in one or two little spots, and you get this pathway. But we're happy to go either way on that one. Other than that, we, we've read over the conditions and they all, we accept those, and we're here to talk, answer any other questions that I might have about everything.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So if I'm understanding, you're, you're not, the applicant is not going to have to put a tree planting eight feet off of that fence? That's the Avenities, that's theirs? And just, I'm looking this way now, how would, how would the applicant go about, um, getting those trees planted?
How would this applicant go about getting?
The new owner of the property, since that prop, since that fence line is supposed to have trees alongside?
Is, is it, is it in the Avenity site plan that it was so to have that landscaping? And it doesn't, and therefore they're in violation, and they can be made to put it in?
Right, okay.
But if it was just some conceptual sketch.
Oh, right.
You said it's the approved site plan, right?
It's a part of the approved site plan, well, I was showing you the plan from the approved site plan.
Then it should go in.
Okay, so then, so the applicant does have a, has, the applicant would have a course of action to get some trees.
Well, this applicant wouldn't, it's not their job to enforce it.
Yeah, no, no.
Sid's trying to answer.
Oh, Sid's trying to answer.
Yeah, that's correct, so what Scott showed, that it's part of the approved final site plan for Avenity Estates subdivision. Um, I'm looking at it right now, it's a six-foot landscaping and maintenance easement along there, and then there's the eight-foot wooden privacy fence to be installed eight feet from the property line, and so.
So how would that, if we're talking about it?
Send the landscaping police over there.
Oh, okay, okay. That's the spring, that's a spring job.
But they can't, the Cats County could make them.
Okay.
Put it in. Okay, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? I just go for it, anybody?
Go ahead.
Sure. Um, question about the stormwater management facility, was that a, a wet pond? Just knowing that the playground is right there and there's no fencing in the project?
That one is actually a dry pond, it's just a, a dry grass swale that fills up with water when it rains, and it just drains out slowly every, over twenty-four hour period. Um, so yeah, it's not intended to be a wet pond next to the, uh, playground facility. We do, we are proposing a couple sort of, um, uh, water quality swales, much like you saw at JPJ within the parking lot between the parking spaces that would help treat the water as it's on the upper part, coming off, coming runoff, coming off the parking lot, and then it would all drain down to that spot for more detention purposes.
Okay, so there's, there's no situation where on a Sunday, it may be rained on Saturday and kids are in the playground, and a three-year-old goes down and there's water in there?
No, I mean, most of those are drained out over like, over twelve-hour periods, so, yeah, you wouldn't really have that situation.
Um, and then in terms of the, the parking, um, are you all exploring any solutions outside of a sea of asphalt? In terms of, you know, pervious solutions or anything like that?
That's definitely something we'll, we'll look into as far as the overall, uh, makeup of, of the parking lot itself. We're, we're definitely looking at, you know, uh, swales up there and to capture the drainage, which would definitely help break it up and provide some type of landscaping in between the asphalt spaces as well.
And assuming there's, is there lighting for the parking lot as well? I think I read that. How about the recreation field?
Uh, no, not on the recreation.
Does that need to be a condition to make sure that doesn't happen? I'm just curious.
The, the question is if there's gonna be lighting on the recreation field.
At any point, could someone just put up stadium lights?
Yeah, we have a lighting ordinance that they would have to adhere to, so if this gets approved and it goes to the final site plan, um, our lighting ordinance will kick in. Um, this is also within the entrance corridor, so the ARB will also be taking a look at this, and they would have to abide by their guidelines as well.
Okay, and then, uh, last question, this is just in general, do you know if the building would be on generator? And I'm just asking, as we have more and more episodes of resiliency and power outages, could this be a place where the community congregates if there's a long power outage, right? Like right now in the wintertime, right?
Yeah, no, that's definitely not a bad idea, it's not something we would make a condition of, but you know, as a church sort of evolves, I can definitely, I can definitely not see it not being part of the phase one, but potentially, you know, phase two and three, four, this is gonna be a series of, you know, at least four, three or four phases. But I would definitely think that as it evolves, especially, you know, the gymnasium kind of comes in it toward the end, yeah, that would be an excellent thing to have for that.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Any other questions?
So, so Scott, is the fifty-five thousand, is that for all the, all, that's for, okay.
The whole facility.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of quick questions, so, um, the, the plantings that aren't existing, that should be there aside, were you all planting on, or planning on planting in the twelve-foot landscape buffer that runs along that border?
We were, yes, where it's not where, if we do just end up disturbing portions of it, we would come back and landscape that portion of it.
And, um, I think Commissioner Carazana helped me understand this, but just to confirm, as you're moving planned west along the alignment of Pebble Drive, there's a white gap between the building parking envelope and the building envelope after the curve. A white.
Yeah, I see that.
That.
Oh, well, I guess that was, that's part of like the, um, the existing twenty-five foot, um, right of way.
I was just wondering, is there a way to move that alignment of the existing Pebble Drive, shifting it down so that it's adjacent to the building and parking envelope, or?
So you would have maybe a more room for a buffer?
More buffer.
Um, potentially, but, you know, basically the way that, that building is working out, we want a little bit of, of gap between the building, and we have some grading too, um, to work with. So, I mean, we'll definitely look at that, but we definitely have, um, building envelope and the grading and the road and a lot kind of going on, but we're trying to kill the grading basically along that edge, but ha- there will be some, um, a fair amount of grading between the building and the road that we'll have to work through.
O- okay, I mean, I guess I'm just thinking, if your building envelope, if you needed that for building envelope, you would have pushed it to the edge of Pebble Drive, and the fact that you haven't, and you haven't with the parking envelope, makes me think there's some wiggle room in there.
Right, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is the grades between that building and Pebble Drive could be as much as, you know, eight, six or eight feet of that location. And so you, why you won't have the building right there, you will have a lot of, of grading. You have, uh, that, that area will be green, but it'll be taken up with, in order to get grades to tie into everything, without putting too many retaining walls, which we're trying to stay away from.
But you haven't done a grading plan yet, right?
Done conceptual one.
Okay.
That's how I noticed, yeah.
Uh, I think that was, that were all my questions. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
So, so by, the following up on the chair's discussion, so will that deal with, or will that handle some of the issues that we heard from the neighbors about being concerned that water is going to be flowing onto their property?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much all the water is gonna be, as you see on the site, it all drains from the site down to Route twenty. You don't have a lot of drainage.
Over, so there's not, so there's not, so there's not so much shifting over to those last, those last units over there by the cul-de-sac?
No, you're not gonna have that situation, you're, we're gonna have the drainage going, you know, going down and going south, not.
Not going north, okay, good, then that solves, that answers that question that someone posed.
Are we, um, sorry, follow up on that, will you be grading in the twelve-foot landscape buffer?
Um, on that northern side, there, there may be some grading that extends there. We're trying to minimize the grain as much as possible, so we can leave as much of the, those existing trees that we can. But there may be a situation, one or two spots that we have to get into it, but we'll replant that.
Roger. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, we have two people signed up to give public comment. The first one is Gina Maranto, I think, and the second one is Laura Sugg. If you'd like to come forward. Gina here? No, doesn't look like it. All right, thank you, thanks for persevering.
Nothing else. Fill up there. Okay, I wrote everything out, but now I'm changing it because of what's just been discussed.
And just identify your.
Laura Sugg, and I live in Avenity Estates on Moffett Street, right by the cul-de-sac, if you care to know. Uh, and I have lived there since it was built. Uh, I've lived in Alamo County, been a homeowner, uh, for over thirteen years, and that doesn't include four years at UVA. So, um, I come before you, I'm happy for a church to be there, it's not a NIMBY situation. The NIMBY situation is the location of the road and the buffer. Uh, if you look closely at that, those are townhouses with the decks, you can see the little decks. So when people come up and down that little driveway, which it is a driveway, it's called Pebble Road, but it's really a driveway, it's gravel right now, so it makes a lot of noise. I hear every single time, and I know it will be paved, and I know, uh, the landscape does nothing for sound buffer, nothing. And then in the winter, it does nothing for visual. So I am going from a beautiful open space to, I, I'm down at the lower end, so I get the athletic field and the, so I'm not looking at a building or a parking lot with lights, so I really feel badly for my neighbors up at the top of Moffett, who are gonna have parking lot lights, and I'm aware that time is passing. My point is, if it's possible to move that road, that's what I think should happen. You've got twenty-one homes purchased at a higher price because of where they're located with the view, and, and I get it, things change, and that's fine, and I'm sure the church will be a good neighbor. But the privacy fence does not go all the way down. I have no privacy fence behind my home. Um, so I just have some scraggly trees, and then there's this gravel road. So if you can't move the road, then I think it should be on the church to build a privacy sound fence as tall as can be for visual privacy, for sound buffering, um, on their side of the buffer zone. Uh, and I don't know what Avenity and Stanley Martin agreed to long ago. All I know is that there's no privacy fence on our four houses, and the privacy fences above are, you know, not that great. And trees are lovely, and I like trees, but they don't do anything for sound. Um, and it's, there's gonna go from a couple cars going to a house to hundreds of cars on a Sunday morning. Yes, it's a Sunday morning and maybe Wednesday nights, I hope the church has lots of activities. So, uh, I beg you to either move the road, which I know is too big of an ask, or ask and require the church to build a privacy fence that is, um, as tall as can be and as soundproofing as can be. And the light issue is very important, uh, light pollution in the neighborhood. Thank you so much for letting me speak, and I am still awake, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
All right, um, yeah. With that, I'll open it back up to the applicant if they'd like to respond, okay. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the Commission for Conversation Discussion.
Well, I think, I, I mean, is there supposed to be a fence down there? So I mean, one of the questions is, is should have, should the, should the, the, the kind public person who's still away be working with Avenity to get the fence put where it should be and get the trees put where the trees should have been? Because it seems like that's not the applicant's fault.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the question as to whether or not on the site plan, that fence that was required as part of the Avenity site plan extends all the way down to the end of that cul-de-sac. I don't know if we have that planned.
Yeah, I can show it on screen.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up on that question, uh, to staff, so is that something that the county can move forward to? Or do you need a complaint? Do you need something filed by some of the residents from Avenity?
So.
Why don't we just complain?
Well, I guess we can.
We just did, we just did.
Complain.
Mr. President just filed a formal complaint.
It didn't help me, it didn't help me in the, in Scott, in, uh, in Esmond, where there was that illegal garage that was taking place down, um, down the road there, you know, that was clearly a violation.
Yeah, it's, well, it's on there, all the way down.
So, so, yeah, doesn't it, Chair? I mean, I know, you, you all are more expert.
I mean, yeah, that would be something like the zoning inspector would do that, not, not Sid, but.
Uh, well, yeah, that's good.
Can we get it, but we should be able to get an answer tonight that somebody can go. Here comes somebody.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm like thinking about zoning versus a site plan that's, you know, already had a bond, so let's see what Bart has to say about that.
Someone else that might be awake.
I don't know, it's kinda, look at him.
So, Bart Savoto, Deputy Director, Community Development, Zoning Administrator. Duly noted, we'll take a look into that to see whether or not it's a site plan violation. There are some great changes there, I don't know, without looking at the plan, how far down the fence actually goes and what's required, so we'll take a look at that. Um, Mr. Vivins, Commissioner Vivins, we can talk about the garage in Esmond, because I think that's been taken care of.
Oh, thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
So we do pay attention to what the commission is interested in, and, and that we do have a, um, some folks would consider our, um, enforcement program a little robust, depending on which end of the complaint you're on. Um, we do the best we can, but we, again, we'll look into it, and there's a potential for a site plan violation, but we'd have to do our research to figure it out.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And it seems if Avenity has an HOA, that's something they should also bring up internally with their own HOA.
Anyway, okay, so we solved that.
I guess one question about, if I looked in the staff report, I didn't see a condition. And maybe it's just applied, but of landscaping that buffer, that twelve-foot landscape buffer.
Yeah, so this site is zoned R1 residential, so landscaping buffers aren't actually required for, for the R1 resid- for residential districts. If this was a commercial site, then a use buffer, which is a twenty-foot use buffer would be required, and that doesn't allow them to to grade it, they would have to provide the plantings. Because they're proposing for the buffer, if this were to be approved and we go into the site plan stage, that's when we can hit them with the landscaping requirements, so screening. And that's when we'll start vetting to make sure the, the plants they're proposing are, are part of our approved plant list.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other discussion?
On number four, is it, is it possible to have that language about? They have to.
At such time, it becomes necessary to connect to. Yeah.
Push back, I'm just going to push even harder.
Just, no, it's, I mean, I just see in, you know, in areas like I see in, in Croze and other places where they've really struggled to get sidewalks in. And if you don't, if you don't get those, those paths in there when development happens, you never get them. And so I just wonder if you're perhaps creating a necessary barrier to the future development of a sidewalk, if you don't just go ahead and just put it there now.
Well, so, so I'm not saying not to put it there, I'm just saying, does, can it be put there, can it be reserved?
It could, the area can be reserved, and it will be put in at such time as there's at least one other thing to connect to.
And, and so I appreciate what you're saying, and, and certainly in, in, in during a number of, of of applications in Croze, I've said the same thing, because it just didn't look like it, particularly on I don't know what that road is, it's the road that's got the, the distillery on it, or the brewery on it, whatever that road. Star Hill Road and whatever that, that stuff, where it was very clear that that, un- until they figure out what they're going to do with the what Acme, what the Acme Files place. Nothing, there's, why are we, why are we making people create sidewalks? Because, because that's the missing link, and then every, and at that point, make them all, make, just do them. I mean, but this, this one here, I do not believe it's going to be several years before there's a sidewalk there.
Well, and if you look at the aerials, which I'm looking at now, you can't even make it head north because it would have to go through the buildings on Avinity's site.
Yeah.
They would have to raise the buildings to make that path go anywhere. And then next door, it would go to a church and the wrecking service.
There you go.
There's, I mean, almost what would be more useful though, is I mean, I know that there are, there are a lot of bikes that go up and down that, that road already, and then a bike lane in that area at least would provide something that could be used now, so we could get off the road for a little bit.
I just, I just, I mean, I think, I think what we're, what I'm suggesting is to give the applicant an opportunity to come up with a solution that works for today, but reserving the space for tomorrow, when, for tomorrow, when they do, in fact, can connect enough, but, you know.
But in the meantime, it could be some nice landscaping sitting there, bushes or something that would be less obnoxious than a, I mean, I, if you look on Haven, you'll see another example of a ten-foot wide path of asphalt that's really frankly quite ugly.
Yeah.
And goes to nothingness, okay? It runs into a hill. It's never getting built. Nothing's connect, it's just, it's hideous. Would much rather see some trees there.
Agreed.
Or even a little, as you mentioned, a little thing for a bike to go.
Yeah, anything.
Well, I know this is my district, but Commissioner Vivins, would you like to make a suggested motion?
My, my colleague had the right language.
Uh, space must be reserved for a future pedestrian connection at such time as the connections to adjacent properties are possible or something, I don't know.
Could it be reserved for, reserved for dedication upon demand in the county?
Yeah, that would work. And then the county could be like, yeah, look, we're making this path.
Okay, all right.
Yep. What he said.
May I ask a clarification question? Are you referring to the path along Scottsville Road? Condition number four is for a pedestrian path from that shared use path along Scottsville Road into the site to connect to the the future church facilities. Just wanted some clarification there.
It's a ten-foot shared use path along Scottsville Road. Not the connection from the path into the property, but the, the part of the path which you, which is that, which was the brown.
Long Scottsville.
Right, so that's condition number three.
Correct. Thank you.
I don't want to rush everyone, but we have a motion.
Wha- was there a motion?
We had a motion. You helped us.
Okay.
I know it's late, for clarity's sake, who made the motion?
Vivins.
Mister Vivins, I just gave him some language for his condition.
And then it got cleaned up by our council.
I guess the ultimate judge of the motion is, is the clerk.
I just thought that the motion was with the updated condition number three stated in the staff report.
And, and you got that motion from Commissioner Vivins?
Who seconded it? Cory? Okay.
Yeah, Cory did.
You got all the wording about reserved at the request of the county, et cetera, okay. All right, so we do have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? All right, can we have the roll, please?
Mister Vivins?
Aye.
Mister Murray?
Aye.
Mister Claiborne?
Aye.
Mister Missile?
Aye.
Mister Carazana?
Aye.
Miss Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right, we are moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Thank you.
Not, not much. So the CCAC met, mainly we just elected officers and talked about potential next topics for the, the next year, so not a lot to report. The other reports?
Our, 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 um ours met too. And the only thing that I, and we did that, we elected officers, but the one thing I would just mention, I know we saw the resilience together, remember when we did that? But this is an AC forty-four. Our guy is looking over there. You need us to call him, Michael?
Hoping they move out of the room.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, could you, would you mind taking your conversations to the hallway, please, Scott?
Thank you.
We had a presentation from the, about, from the resilience together, which was really quite good. But there was a piece in there where they're talking about going out into using partners, and this goes to Cory's thing, using partners to talk about that. And so who, who have their hands and who have their fingers in different parts of our community. And it would be helpful, or perhaps helpful, if a question or two or three questions for AC forty-four were included in that discussion. Since they're going to parts of our community that don't necessarily come to us, or come here, or go to the various things. And, and I think, who was it, who's, uh, Serena?
Serena.
Serena, Serena mentioned that they're working with your team on the AC forty-four, so if you could perhaps season that those, those conversations, because these are big, I don't know, it's like ten or twelve different organizations in the community. That may be a way, as, as, as Cory is mentioning, how we get some more input, because it's one of them's the Haven. Another one's, uh, there's some, uh, LEAP and some other community actions that could perhaps have something that you might be able to be useful in that, that's all on, on that one.
Great. Uh, Michael Barnes, any AC forty-four updates?
Um, I'm none for it this evening. If you have any questions.
And Board of Supervisors from January eighth?
Be honest with you, I haven't even looked that up. It's one of those nights. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, it was, we, they had their business meeting on the eighth. And we did have a presentation for the rural area chapter to them, the extensive discussion on the rural area topics. All things talked about ACE program and it's, uh, you know, the desirability to continue with the ACE program. And some other topics that were of interest.
Awesome. Uh, any old business?
Chair, Chair, if I might, I just add, I wasn't here, and I thank you for your indulgence, but I would be one of those voices that I read the, the minutes from that, and said, said that we'd all agreed that it should be Shadwell where the, uh, where the rural thing, and I would say I would have disagreed with that. I believe it should be Yancey, it should be Yancey, the Yancey exit, because that's where our agriculture is right now. And that's where people are coming to do the various things out there. And then there's that big mill, gee. Right there on two fifty, that's one of the largest agricultural, agricultural businesses we had. So I would not have been in favor of, of the Shadwell exit, because when you look at it, I like the topographic, the, the bird's eye view. When you look at things from a bird's eye view, the real land that could actually acquire, that could, could take on some development is not there. That was, it's on the other side of town.
That was where we identified priority, right? As opposed to excluding the other one.
It said that we'd all decided, but, and that we decided was sort of like, well, okay, I wasn't here, so I get that, but so I'm just adding this. But I think there was also a, an esprit, because I remember something from my colleague here, that there was a there's something going on that they don't want that side looked at by some, some other people, and I just think that there's just been this thing about not, not Croze, not the Yancey Mill thing, but always always looking at Shadwell, and I, when you look at it from above, there's more stuff out there, there's more room out there to do something than there is in Shadwell.
Well, the, the comment that I've made consistently about about Yancey Mills is that, you know, currently that area is, is zoned industrial. And, you know, there, you know, right now, you could, if the mill were to close, you could put any kind of industrial there, some of which would be highly inappropriate.
Right.
And so I think it, it would, what would make a lot of sense, you know, in terms of that area is, is redefining what we call industrial, coming up with a classification for agricultural support industrial that's appropriate for that area.
Versus just general industrial.
As opposed to general industrial. Um, and that would be a, of reasonable activity, and we'll talk about that, that area, that I think that, I think people in Croze would support that.
My point was that if we're going to do a study on those intersections, that, 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 the Yance, the Yancey intersection is where you'd have a more robust sort of, set of results that could come out of that. Because there is land there, and if that, if there's more of an opportunity there than there is on the, on the Shadwell side.
I, I, I'm not going to weigh in on that.
Okay.
One way or another, I mean, I will say there's another conversation that happened at the Board Supervisors meeting too. There's some discussion about a growth area swap. There's a bunch of discussion about that. And, yeah, and I guess the, the, I had some concerns about that, hearing that mainly because the areas that they were talking about, you'd have to find an area that doesn't, that, uh, doesn't already have public water and sewer, and it's not going to get public water and sewer. Because once you, you know, they talked about the is it Ravenna Village? Is that what it's called?
That is it, that is what it's, that is what it is.
And, and so my understanding is that's going to get public water and sewer. So that wouldn't mean adequate swap. If you're swapping that for some other place that you're going to add put something else, make something else in the rural area, growth area. You've already given the big thing, which is water and sewer. What are you really swapping, you know? So, I mean, that'd be, you might want to go back and, I didn't hear that whole conversation about.
Well, we, that originated here. When, because I was the one who put, put forward that if you look at what's happening in Ravenna Village, and if you think, and if you just follow the narrative that's taken place over my time on the planning commission, that is not going to happen. The big, the, the big community in the woods is Glenmore. And Glenmore has done everything that it could possibly do to make sure that growth out there has been stalled. We looked at a project out there that was off a deer field road or deer.
Yeah, Running Deer Lane or.
Running Deer Lane, which was a brilliant, had a really nice setup, and it just got hammered and hammered and hammered to basically, I think, it's not being done, or it's being done at some very, very.
I think you're referring to Breezy Hill.
Who?
Breezy Hill.
Was that what it's called? Yeah, and, and I mean, it just got torn to pieces by people in Glenmore, because it is what it is, and is what it is. I mean, and, you know, I can't, I don't, I can't argue that. And so I believe if you go out there, that everything that was supposedly in the, in the mix and the idea when, when, um, when that was being, when that development area was being created, has basically been stalled. And to a point where everybody on their CAC resigned en masse once, because they just said, we, we don't believe this is ever going to happen. And so I don't know how you make it happen. I don't know how, maybe the supervisors have the lift on it. And so if that's never going to happen, is there someplace that that, that designated piece of ground can be allocated someplace else? Where there is transportation, where there is a road, because the other piece is, is that, you know, the trestle that's out there by Clifton? That can never be expanded, because when we looked at expanding the road there, they, they came back and said, forget it, we're not giving you any space to put any more roads. Put any more lanes on the trestle, the bridge right there, so it's always going to be too late. Uh, there is, so you basically created a non-functioning development area that is nice that it's on a piece of paper, but it's never going to be, it's never going to fulfill, it's the desire of it being a, a development area.
I mean, I guess my point is that a swap is implying that one area is giving up something. It's so that, so that something else can get that thing that they're giving up, and I'm not really sure that, you know, there's something being given up.
How about there's something never going to be realized? Because in the decision to make that a, a, um, a development area, other places were denied. And so now what we have, going back in history, is we have a place that's never going to be part of the development area. And yet we said no to all these places that possibly could be because of transportation and, and water, because a decision was made lowly as many years ago to do something there that's never going to be realized. That's, that's the swap I'm, I'm talking about. It's not, acknowledge it's not going to be realized, now let's go look at another part of the county that could realize it. And I'm not suggesting Croze, I'm suggesting someplace else, some places, other places.
All right, thank you. Um, any items for follow-up? If not.
I know you're sick of me. I think it would be really cool to see the Civic Assessor. I happen to be in the office, it's so cool. You know that piece of software that they said that people were going to be able to put their, um, their, their projects in? We could put our projects in, and then they would work with the software, and then somebody could say, yes, you could use this, it's your new.
You're talking about our new, the Civic Acc- Access.
Very, very cool, and, and a number of us have been saying, when are we going to get something like this? Well, it went up live last week.
And that took place at the county view, right?
It did. So you're interested in sort of getting a little demonstration about?
We always say, you know, Lewis, Lewis is one of the first, what are we going to see that's got some new, you know, we say we're doing these plans. That was, I thought, I got a, I got like a three or four minute demonstration of it, and it does the kinds of things that I think would be helpful to people.
I'm sure that Jody Burdo would love to give you a tour of that new software.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and if we do it as a planning mission, everyone will see it.
Yeah.
Right? All of our fans out there.
All right, I don't think I need a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned until Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Thanks, everybody.